Here.
Mr. Dermott?
Here.
Mr. McInley?
President.
Mr. Mitchell?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Willoughby?
Here.
Here.
All right, thank you. Mr. Ski, would you like to make an announcement regarding the executive session?
Yes, right before this meeting, we had a meeting where we discussed personnel matters and litigation.
Thank you. Are there any additions or deletions from the voting session agenda? Very nice. Ask for a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Agenda is adopted. All right, well now moving to public comment. I have three slips here. First, we have Scott Lindy. Sir, what's your municipality you live in? Okay, all right, you can step up to the podium. Is this on an agenda item, sir?
You know what? It's about the LSA grant.
Okay, this is not on the agenda, so we'll have you come up during the next. Thank you. Joe Hillen? Is this on an agenda item, sir?
It's on number seven on the LSA.
Oh, okay, that's on the work session, so we'll have you come up for that as well. Sorry. Greg Griffin?
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anybody else in the audience for public comment on agenda items only? Anyone on the Zoom? All right. Okay, I do have two emails that were sent to us. Okay, all right, all right, we'll read those again. Apologies. Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the October 11th meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Next, we have a motion to adopt the resolution requesting a multimodal transportation fund grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation.
Second, Kendra.
Yep.
I don't care.
Call please, Ms. Lawrence. Any discussion? Mr. Venus? Yes. Mr. Listgavitt?
Yes.
Dermott?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Willoughby?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
unanimous? Okay, motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the county manager to execute the sale of a parcel of county-owned property and unlock township to Leonard Downs.
So move global.
Any discussion? Call please, Ms. Lawrence. For your second?
Yeah.
Mr. Listgavitt?
Yes.
Dermott?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Willoughby?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
All right, now we have public comment on non-agenda items. First, Scott Lindy.
Appreciate the opportunity, Scott Lindy. I've been on the redevelopment authority board for nine years and very proud of what we have done, but I have some concerns about the LSA grant and how it's proceeding at this point. We haven't had, in my estimation, the amount of information we need. We put off two MSAs and only have one financial institution giving us any feedback at this point. I think that there's inherently something wrong with that. I realized and I thought, when I got up Monday morning, I found three terms and conditions that were going to go to a closing on Thursday. And I see that with this volume of money of $75 million for the LSA grant and everything, I would just wish that hopefully we could, with the redevelopment authority, work with the council now that you're in charge of things, to get the information we need to give to financial institutions to get some competition. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Sir Lindy, the first time they did an RFP.
Yes.
I thought they had like three.
We had four, but none of them worked. None of them came back and did anything because all of them said, without your guarantee, they won't address it. The next time, we finally got that knocked out. The second time it came out supposedly, three or four banks went together, but what I read in these three articles that were set to be supposedly have a closing on Thursday, that all these terms and conditions were never put on the, out to other financial institutions, and I think that we need to have competition before we move ahead. That's my only concern.
Bank they were talking about, the zone one that replied to the second RFP?
It was the same bank, but they said they had three other banks with them, but the information that I got on Monday only has one bank.
They said they have three, but there's only one.
There's only one.
Thank you, sir. Joe Hillen?
Good evening. I'm Joe Hillen, township manager, here tonight to speak on behalf of Newport Township, Board of Commissioners, to respectfully request that the council allocate the requisite monies from the casino gambling-funded infrastructure fund to replace the county-owned Nanticoke, West Nanticoke Bridge over the Susquehanna River. First and foremost in our request is the public safety in our communities. Additionally, the introduction of a new structure will enhance industrial, commercial, and residential development. The bridge was downgraded to a 15-ton weight limit in 2020. Currently, the county has no funds to address or correct its deficiency. In addition, the facility's current condition poses a safety threat to our public safety officers who utilize it while carrying out their daily duties, especially when these require using heavy equipment. Also, the current weight limitations on the facility can require that emergency vehicles and personnel will be forced to increase their response time to emergencies, thus negatively affecting the health and safety of those facing a crisis situation. Newport Township is blessed with an abundance of underdeveloped land, but this acreage requires certain infrastructure assets to attract new development and employers. The ability to access potential industrial sites is a generally major requirement. Construction of the proposed new bridge will substantially aid in meeting our community's goal. Additional major corollaries to this proposal are the substantial tax revenue, which can be generated from the proposed subsequent development of the current open space in this area. These additional tax dollars can assist the county in underwriting the cost of repairing the newest roads and bridges for which is currently responsible. This proposal can very possibly create a win-win situation for all concerned parties. And also tonight with me, I have two of our township commissioners, Mr. John Zyla and Mr. Debbie Zaleski and Mr. Steve Phillips, who is a member of our community, president of our community organization, and also is a member of the Luzerne County Redevelopment Authority who supports the project. And thank you for, let me give me the opportunity to address the council, and we look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Griffin?
Members of council, fellow citizens, Greg Griffin, Swarazelle. Mr. Robertson, I just have a question. Your recent comments on WNEPTV. Go ahead and shoot, shoot straight, and I have been shot at before. Before thousands of people on WNEPTV. What did you mean by that? Sir? Mr. Robertson?
I'm not going to get into dialogue such as the council wishes to.
Well, you're sitting here, you're a public official, and I'm paying you $183,000. So I can take that and many others take it, your comments, as using a gun. Your cavalier attitude on public TV towards possible shots being fired. I've been shot at before. Shoot straight. Mall shootings, school shootings, elected officials being shot, police shot. And you go on TV and tell thousands of citizens to shoot straight in regards to your tax issue. And you've been shot at before.
Mr. Griffin, you have to address the council as a whole.
What?
You have to address the council as a whole. You can't, you can't just address the singular person. I apologize.
Okay. But council, I think this attitude pretty much kills Mr. Robertson's tax increase initiative. He won't answer the question about what his comments were to thousands of citizens on TV. In this climate of mass shootings, and we have a top county official, the cavalry and a cavalier attitude, starts talking about shots fired. He's been shot at before. I don't know if he's been, I don't, council, I don't know if he's been shot at before at another city he worked at, at another county he worked at. I mean, God forbid. But the credibility, I think, of the manager is in question with these comments. And I quite, I think it's a serious thing because there are people on the verge of losing their homes because of this tax increase. And they're gonna, they're gonna use this tax increase maybe as an initiative to maybe do something violent. And we have a top official that said.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Griffin.
Make sure you shoot straight.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin.
Thank you.
Julius Zuckerhar? Can you state your municipality, sir?
Huh?
Can you state the municipality that you live in?
Yes. Um.
What town?
I would like.
What town do you live in? What town? What town do you live in, sir?
I live in Aboca.
Okay, thank you.
Which is also Luzerne County. Um. With all this money that Luzerne County is getting now, I said you spend it in on stuff the county really doesn't need. How about spending it on training all these police officers? I don't care what county. It's all just Luzerne County. Like Wilkes-Barre Police needs CIA, Aboca Police needs a CIT officer. Because I can tell you that, because I got in trouble, and there ain't no CIT officers there for people with mental health issues. And I think there should be. So when there is a crisis, you don't have to try and call out of your area because they ain't coming. Because the only area close to where I live that has mental health officers is strength. Why? That's what I'd like to know. Why ain't these officers getting trained in the mental health field? Not just once at the academy. I think it should be every six months or every year. I don't care if you got 20 years on force. You still need to be trained. And it's not being done. And their bags don't mean nothing because they override their power. They need to take, like it says, it's on their police car, protect and serve. If they're not going to serve and protect, take it off the police car. Or get off the force. If you're not going to do your job right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Controller Griffin?
Just have two, three items for council to consider when you're working on the budget in the next couple of weeks, is that the merit raise doesn't seem to be taken out of the current budget for the 2022 year. There's been money allocated for merit raises, but nothing's been taken out here to date. So take a look at that when you folks are looking at the budget and maybe question why council allocated merit raises, but nothing was ever given out to anybody. I know the merit raises were given out, but the money didn't hit the line item for the merit raise increase. So just consider that when you're looking at the budget over the next couple of weeks and possibly ask the departments and division heads why that number's not been taken out of the budget. Imagine it's probably coming out of salaries and they'll true it up at the end of the year, but I don't believe that that's probably the way it should have been. We should have allocated the merit raises and given it out when they gave it out, took it out of the budget in that way. So just think about that when you look over the budget. And the other item that I have is there was a budget transfer posted on the internet today. I guess it was today, but it was dated the 21st of October. And I don't know that anybody from council get a budget transfer notification from anybody, because I didn't get it. And the charter clearly says we're supposed to get something five days after the transfer, before five days is up. I don't know why we didn't get it, but again, the charter doesn't seem to carry a whole lot of weight around here anymore, but I think we need to start paying attention to those things. The controller needs to be notified when there's a budget transfer. So when we have a problem, somebody can raise an issue, or the council can raise an issue. But if we never get the transfer, we don't know this ever even happened. But that clearly did happen because it's on the website. 1021, there was a budget transfer made. Nobody got notification of it, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. I do have two emails to read. The first one is from Cindy Brandon. It says, Madam Chair, please read aloud and slowly so that everyone can hear you. Please enter into the record for council meeting October 25th, 2022. Cindy Brandon, Wright Township. Dear all, we need immediate oversight of all our county departments. We need to be sure bids generated are from the correct departments for the work. As an example, should renovations for the former Air Reserve Center be coming from the Road and Bridge Department's account? If our head of purchasing says it's from the engineer's budget, should the engineers have their own account? I am waiting for a response from our county manager to explain this bid regarding the department that is shown to be funding the request and the need, given the incredible tax increase he is requesting during this difficult time of inflation for so many Luzerne County residents. It is also critical that the budget our council passed for 2022 be followed and the budget you will pass in December for 2023 be followed. Funds from one county department should not be transferred to another to cover the original department's shortfalls. It is also imperative that the work for each department follow the scope of responsibilities for each department. Road and bridge workers should only be assigned to road and bridge work. Moving files, concert venue work, etc. must never be allowed as it is putting residents at serious risk, considering the conditions of our county roads. Please address this immediately regarding Cindy Brandon. The second one is from Ms. Valerie Lanning. It says, I'm truly concerned over the suggestion to raise taxes, especially so that local slash county government employees can get a raise. I hope that's a very modest raise, just like the rest of us are getting. Cut somewhere else, get creative. This funding to raise tax, this default to raising taxes is getting really old. You're not going to have anyone left in the county to tax soon when we all leave. We'll take our education and skills elsewhere. And a county manager at $185,000. I mean, really, that's a pretty big salary for someone who brought no ideas and no creativity, but the same old raise taxes solution. It's laziness and we're sick of it. And we do have one hand up as well. This is Vivian. Is this Vivian? Vivian, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Is this, is this the same Vivian that I just read the letter from?
No, my Vivian Kreidler-Lacina from Mesquite.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, just some quick things about the taxes. I came across an article that says the circus is coming to town. I'm going to read just a little bit of it real quick. It says that Mount Juliet residents were upset on, over four years because of raising taxes. In the city, they had doubled its revenue in previous five years, and other residents wanted to warn his next community, which is Versatile Hills. I'm not pronouncing that right, I know it, but decided they don't need to know the circus is coming to town. They will find out soon enough. Mount Juliet residents were apprehensive about alerting Versatile Hills about Mr. Robertson's poor management for fear that Mr. Robertson might return to Mount Juliet. Other articles that I have been coming across and areas that I have talked to, and even in your, on the Luzerne County website. I know that $55 to, to someone does not amount to anything when he's making $183,000 a year. But you have to remember Luzerne County is basically low-income, middle-class. There's no rich people. I don't believe there's anybody living in Luzerne County that makes every $400,000 a year. I may be wrong, but everybody is working two and three jobs just to make ends meet. And people who are disabled or on social security, and if you check your tax rolls, you will find there are a lot of elderly people on the tax rolls to even raise $5 or $50, $50 or $55 a year. The price of a Big Mac at McDonald's is over $5. Okay, a lot of us don't even go out to eat. Restaurants are closing because the inflation is so bad. I think we need to look, as everybody else is saying, different areas to cut taxes, to cut other, instead of raising our taxes. I also remember a little over a year, well, maybe about a year ago, Mr. Lombardo, where I had sent you an email about the $600 for the people on the Homestead program. And your exact words to be back were, my question has been asked for many who inquires about the person, the proposal is, yes, would you prefer us to use the money on eligible county projects, which would prevent us from raising taxes for potential several years? Or would you prefer a $600 rebate and require the county to raise taxes this upcoming year? Now, that money was from the government, so I didn't understand why, if you gave us the money, we would raise taxes. But in the same token, you're saying if we use it for all these projects, you don't have to raise taxes. Now you have somebody who's come in that has only worked in other government areas, maybe four years.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Mark Monoski? Mark Monoski? Can you hear us, Mark?
I can hear you. I guess you can't hear me.
No, we can hear you now, sir.
Okay.
What?
I'm in Rice, I'm Luzerne County Rice Township. And my question is, on its one-year anniversary plus Hesslop Road Bridge, County Bridge 36901, has not been touched, nor is there any indication of progress on this as a project to repair. The temporary partitions put up are falling down, and it's certainly not safe for the loads that are being carried over. So if it's somewhere on the agenda, you could status the project for us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else for public comment? Okay, all right, ma'am, you first, all right. Just state your name and municipality.
My name is Diane Cowman. I'm from Kingston. And I spoke last month about my grant application. And since the grants have not begun to be reviewed, the grant applications, excuse me, I thought I would take the opportunity just to add a little bit of information of what my intentions are. I currently own and direct the Second Family Memory Care Center in Wilkes-Barre for folks with Alzheimer's and related dementias. And my intentions with the grant is to expand our services, to open a personal care home for the same population, so that our folks, when they leave us, instead of going into a long-term care facility, they can come to a place like ours, receive great care and be safe, and also in terms of COVID and other infectious diseases. Two things that really came to light with COVID in terms of long-term care were that, number one, the obvious, we weren't taking the proper precautions that we should to keep our folks healthy in light of infectious diseases. And the second thing was something that's also, that's actually been longstanding, and that's neglectful situations in long-term care, as well as staff shortages. And of course, that's compounded. So my intention is opening this facility to serve up to 20 folks with Alzheimer's or related dementias. And we're also going to have included in that a small dementia village. It will be all-inclusive. We will have a staff that's very trained in the skill set that is required for this population. And because it is a small facility, we will able to, we will be able to provide great care and keep them safe from the infectious diseases such as COVID. So I just wanted to kind of add that, take another opportunity to explain myself and what our intentions are. And I hope that you will consider our application.
What's the name of the facility?
The one I run now is Second Family Memory Care Center. It's at 89 South Washington Street in Wilkes-Barre. And our intentions with the long-term care facility or the personal care home is right around the corner in the same building next to the movie theater. So we would keep all of our services right in that building, right in downtown Wilkes-Barre in Luzerne County. Thank you.
Let's just go right down the line.
Good evening, members of council. My name is Mark Bonsel. I'm the Fire Chief for Nanticoke City Fire Department. I bring to you tonight a major concern of mine, and that is the Nanticoke, West Nanticoke Bridge. There's been a lot of rumor, chatter going around social media, regular media. To a point that council is looking to change their scope of work and not placing the bridge. It's my opinion, that's a very bad decision. You know, a team of kind of professionals, including Mr. Plesh, the county engineer, has identified this bridge as the highest priority as a public safety infrastructure project. Other local emergency responders, as well as myself, have identified this as a critical public safety issue. Right now, my department currently services, provides fire and rescue service to the West Nanticoke section of Plymouth Township. West Nanticoke has dissolved their fire department approximately two years ago. We were contracted by Plymouth Township for that section. Right now, with the reduced weight limit, not all of my apparatus can go over that bridge, resulting in apparatus having to now go over the Cross Valley Bridge. To me, that's unacceptable. And in a time of emergency, we all know that time matters. Right now, if there's a fire over that West Nanticoke section, my department could get there, could be, once they go around, could be on that scene within three minutes. I have a couple examples of fires that we had. 9090s popular streets tire, an old garage. Dispatch time, we were dispatched at 14:48. We went around at 14:50. We're on scene at 14:53, three minutes. Within three minutes after our arrival, we had water on the fire. 383 East Poplar Street. Dispatch at 0519 in the morning. We went on the way at 5:22. Run scene at 5:25. Within two minutes, we had water on the building.
Thank you, chief. Sorry, your time is up.
Oh, okay.
All right, anybody else? Just state your name and municipality. Just state your name and municipality, please.
Donna Wall, City of Nanticoke. I'm actually the city manager for the city of Nanticoke. I'm going to be short and sweet because you guys already hold a record for the longest meetings. So I'm here to speak on behalf of myself, Mayor Kevin Coughlin, and city council to respectfully request that county council allocate the monies from the casino gambling infrastructure fund to replace the county-owned Nanticoke, West Nanticoke Bridge. I'm not going to reiterate what my fire chief already has stated, but public safety is first and foremost in our request here tonight, not only for the city of Nanticoke, but for the surrounding areas. The West Nanticoke Bridge has already been identified by the community economic leaders in our area in sustaining the progress that we've already made in the South Valley and for opening new opportunities in our valley. I respectfully request that Luzerne County Council does not ignore this request and that of many other neighboring communities and carefully contemplate your decision in the use of these funds and allocate them to replace the county-owned West Nanticoke Bridge. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Warren Faust, Wilkes-Barre Township. I rise to speak before council tonight as the president of the Northeast Pennsylvania Building and Construction Trade Council. The sixteen craft I represent amongst the thousands of workers that I represent here in Northeast Pennsylvania. We've already heard from numerous residents in the fire chief of why this LSA money and this bridge is needed and should be directed to the south of Luzerne County. We already know that the county engineer has listed this as the highest priority public infrastructure. County and locally emergency first responders need that bridge to save valuable time. And the community and economic development leaders have identified the West Nanticoke Bridge as essential in sustaining future growth. That's what I rise about tonight, not, you already heard the three main reasons, public safety should be first and foremost. But we need projects to build in Northeast Pennsylvania. This, this grant calls for prevailing wage on these projects, so we could bid in an open fair, equitable for all contractors to bid. It fosters the use of apprenticeship, because that's the only legal way to save money on a prevailing wage project. Thus encouraging and educating the future workforce in Northeast Pennsylvania, if you want to save on those projects. But I really think what the chief just told me should stick to everybody's mind. You give everybody three minutes at this podium. Imagine if you had to wait eight to nine more minutes while your loved one was laying on the floor for ambulance. Imagine if you had to wait eight to nine more minutes for that fire apparatus to get to your house. We give three minutes for every resident to speak. I just want you to think about that, nine minutes when your house is on fire. Please do the right thing. Let's close on this lone Thursday. Let's get the building. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else for public comment?
Just real, real quick, I have a couple seconds.
You can have twenty more seconds, sir. I apologize. Go ahead.
No, I, again, I didn't, I didn't get a chance to finish this off. Yes, by, by going over the South Cross Valley Bridge, that's going to add another seven to nine minutes onto my response time. Like I said, we all know that, you know, time matters. Fire accelerates exponentially in that, in that short amount of time. And, you know, if you had a loved one that was relying on a fire apparatus to come, that's going to take about ten, fifteen, ten, you know, ten minutes on a good day, that's without any inclement weather. That's my thought process on this, and I really hope that you really reconsider allocating that money to replace that thing.
Anybody else for public comment? Mr. Raybo.
Good evening. Mark Raybo, Hazelton. I'm speaking as a citizen, not speaking as a member of the authority board, just for clarification. I agree with the Nanticoke officials. They have a, they have a case in point. Public safety, I wholeheartedly agree. But also, there's another component, and it's the financial component here that needs to be talked about. And the rush based on not public safety, but political expediency of a lame duck state senator who feels that this should be expedited because of certain political, scoring political points or for political gain somewhere down the line. I think that does a disservice, not only to Nanticoke, because we, the taxpayers of Luzerne County, need to also be cognizant of other municipalities and their public safety needs. So I think the council, along with the redevelopment authority, along with the state, need to get together to see what the best course of action in terms of fiscal responsibility and public safety are. So we, it, so it's all win-win. We want a win-win solution. It doesn't have to be a zero-sum game, especially when it's based on political expediency, which is, in my opinion, so egregious, it makes me sick. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo. Anybody else for public comment?
Some of, some of the questions I have for some of the Nanticoke officials, how many times do they take heavy equipment over the bridge? I'm assuming that it's going to preclude ambulances, they can go there now without a weight restriction. When I asked Larry Plesh, you know, what was your last traffic study? Shows that there's about twenty-five percent less traffic over that bridge over the course of maybe like the last five years or so. So, you know, you have less traffic. Is it really economically feasible, you know, to invest in the bridge with that amount? There are other funding mechanisms for bridges as well, not just this LSA money. There is a five percent program that the state has too at times where, you know, the municipalities can pony up five percent, and the state, I think, takes in ninety-five percent. You know, I, I don't think we've looked at all the options, you know, and explored all of them, where it could be more cost-effective and still result in that bridge being done. But I don't think it has to come out of the LSA money at this point in time. I'd like to know how often you take over an apparatus and how many calls, because I haven't heard any numbers or figures of, you know, if you could stress the public safety measure.
We run over Plymouth Township, over probably about three hundred and fifty calls per that's on fires. And that's, that's, that includes actual fire, rescue, and EMS.
The, the heaviest of the equipment?
We do run EMS.
Right. But are you taking the heaviest of fire trucks over there every single call?
The engine goes over there all the time, all of them.
I mean, those are the types of questions that, that I would like to know, you know, like the numbers, the number of times that you use a bridge. That hasn't been addressed, you know? We only hear the buzzword, public safety version. We all want to make sure everybody's safe in all sixty, you know, or all seventy-six municipalities here in Luzerne County. But there are other funding mechanisms. I don't think we've done our diligence with the RA, the council, county management as a whole, to get together in smaller groups to address the infrastructure needs of maybe Nanticoke, West Nanticoke. I mean, right now, you're asking us for a big ticket item. Over the course of twenty-five years, we're paying probably one-third interest to the bank, which is not really smart from a financial perspective on our tax dollars. And we're looking at maybe, you know, seventy-five million dollars is what the price tag is and what we're sort of on hook for. But we're only going to realize it at forty-five million. I don't, you guys have a number. It's lower than forty-five, forty-one million?
Forty-seven million, one hundred and fifty-five thousand.
So that's like twenty-eight million dollars less than, you know?
That would be more than you said.
All right. All right, Mr. Urban, if you want to have a discussion with the city officials and the RA, you can do that privately outside the meeting, but just continue the conversation. We're not, all right, everybody. Everybody, if you want it, if you want to have a conversation, we can have a conversation outside of public comment here. Public comment is meant for people to come up here and speak to the council as well. Mr. Thor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Real brief, I just strongly advise everyone here to stick around for the work session when we're going to give a lot more details out regarding that, all the state money. Okay? It's just, please stick around and hear the whole story about it. Thank you. Thanks.
All right, Lombardo.
All right.
Very much back to our position, discussing great deeds and open policy. Major issue that I see is public safety. Everybody who resides in their community should have the opportunity to see. I know it's expensive, price tag. It's never too expensive, it's impossible to choose a potential life. As far as some of the other sources of funding, you know, we sign, get this thing going, and we find other sources, five million, whatever it might be. We can then use that five million for bridge replacement, and that allows us to have five million dollars to work on some other projects, which we all realize we need. But public safety, be sure we are number one concerned. I know it's a heavy price tag. I want to see how a fee we want to deliver both of these public charges.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. I agree. Anything else? Motion to adjourn? Say, in favor? Close, date. Thank you. Meeting's adjourned. It is six fifty. We'll start the work session at seven o'clock.
Recording stopped.
Because my wife and I, as your husband said, we both also end thirty years of PAQ. That's what got it. If he lives off base, you can. So two officers getting PAQ in seventies and eighties and nineties. So we rent one house, or buy one house, and then we, we invested in one weekend ahead. But I say this, I'm not a newcomer, so it seems to me, and it's just, we're going to do it. It's been sitting there for years and has a reputation for, we, and I said, Lori, I read, and I said, I'm just telling you as a suggestion, has had the council giving away a lot of options, rather than keep doing this, seventy-one and twenty-eight. We got to keep coming back to you, Bolton. You have to, you know, we got to go on close session, and it's just time to work. We need to empower you. And I said, if I do, I walk next door to wherever these places are, and say, give me your best level. So three fifty, or three eighty, two seventy, whatever it is, but then you and I, you say, this is what they're saying, because I'm afraid that I have to leave the picture. And it's winter, and we're paying rent off. And, and I mean, the heat, utilities, we got to keep monthly, water and water, and so, and things like that, that's. So it's just a thought. I mean, I didn't want to step my boundaries at the same time. I had hard drives, right? Use solutions. Well, when she says she had two prospective ones, and I said, if I were you, I'd walk down the street and piece a paper, and say, give me your best offer. And then, I don't know what that is. He's going to, he's going to, he's going to give me, give me based on another. That's not going to try, it's really, go. There's options, that's not, that's not, that's not, that's not, he's going to start, he's going to, I've done these two hundred times. He's shoving it from the sleeve, and they're back and forth between them, and he's very sleazy and motion, and he will tell you the weaknesses in the strengths, and he will try to get you to compromise, and the compromise will somewhere along the lines of these four things. I just submit to you, I will, I will, not, I shouldn't say it that way, ready? And you're trying to hurt, he's not going to, he's not going to. Hi, sir, I'm Randy Roberts. Where'd you get this?
They, they gave it to me Monday and told me that.
At the RSA meeting?
No, there was, there was nobody given to it. He said, oh, it's coming. I, the man, we got the money, we got the money. They, 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 they got one bag, they got one bag.
Mr. Riley, it's easy there.
Well, Mr. Riley said, yeah, but they're, they made up like one bag. How's that, I mean, all this money is getting one financial benefit.
I can't imagine. This is more than.
It has the, everybody's aware.
So it's fair enough.
I'm a contractor. I would like to get it, no, please.
Well, depends on what you're, you do. But in the banking work? Yeah. Yeah, there's more dish out there.
I give him my part, and that's it all.
Yeah, if you would. Is that Halloween candy? Did you rate somebody a country jar? So you went somewhere.
Because I don't even know what, what do you do? That's it.
There's mounds bars. I suppose that's what it means, ever.
Didn't take long, did it?
Right when it starts to get tough.
Whatever. Has to be done sometimes.
Yes, you're right.
I told them, don't take it personally. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Was that you?
I brought it.
Okay.
I didn't know it's like.
The scabbard just get credit.
You? Did you take credit for the chocolate? I brought the chocolate. That was me. Thank you. Taken. You're like, yeah, yeah, that was, oh, yeah, sure. You're like, yeah, yeah, that was, oh, yeah, sure. Problem is, if I had that.
Right here?
It's terrible.
So can we just? Can I just, I'll just make, I'll just make. I mean, if you check. I'll just, I'll just email Shannon. I'll just say, this is what Shannon said. So when, when it appears on the agenda. Get a look here on the next one. Yeah, so I'll just.
Yeah, I'm not.
But if it's there.
It's seven oh one P M. We'll restart with the, uh. With the work session. Restart.
Recording in progress.
Mr. Venus?
President.
Julius Gabbett?
Here.
Mr. Vermaat?
Here.
Mr. McGinnly?
President.
Mr. Mitchell?
Here.
Mr. Carey? Mr. Radel? Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Lovett?
Here.
Mr. Radel? Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
Ten of eleven until I make contact.
All right. Any additions or deletions from work session agenda? I, I do, I apologize. There is one, um, there is one, uh, question. A couple of council members asked me if we could move. Discussion regarding the fifty one million for L S A from number seven to number one. Is everybody okay with that? Okay, we'll move them to number two, number, okay. Okay, we'll move it to number three. Is everybody okay with that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. All right. Motion to adopt the work session agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, extensions. All right. We'll start with the booth update.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Good evening, good evening. I'm hoping that, that the presentation. It should be forthcoming. As you all know, our company, Booth Management Consulting, we're. Working with you all in your offer grants management program. So, well, opera program. And I want, I would like to give you updates. I know last week we did a virtual, but this time. I, I'm gonna need a little bit more help from you all to get this done. So, um, it's come to my attention that the council will be the evaluation team. And so with that in mind, there's certain things that I want you all to begin to consider. As in using the term rules of engagement. It's not a. And when I go through this presentation, this, as always, these are not Robbins rules. These are the Uniform Guidance Rules under two C F R, part two hundred. Federal award monies, and when you're awarded federal awards money and you're awarding.
That's the end.
Yep.
Right.
I'm just, I'm just going fast. Okay. So the first part of this, we'll go over just the application status where we are. The numbers have not changed. Um, as you might recall from the last presentation, there were two applications that were non-responsive to our request for additional information to get through the initial screening. So there's been a lot of work on these applications, but I think it was, they hadn't been touched yet. So it has been a lot of work. Okay, so let's go to the application status. So we're processing a hundred and thirty nine applications. A hundred and thirty eight have completed what we call the phase, the eligibility determination of phase two. So they've all completed phase one. Everybody's been screened those. There were two that were non-responsive. And they had incomplete applications. We asked them, gave them at least ten business days to get it, to get us the information. They didn't. We notified you who they were. So now we finished phase one. So that means we've done the eligibility determinations. The council will get the applications. It, it does not matter what the eligibility determination is. Once they made it through screening. We will give you applications and tell you whether they're eligible, ineligible, or ineligible. As we said, we are not making any determinations relative to your application. We're giving the council the information. For you all to use as a part of your evaluation. So you will get every application, whether we deemed it eligible or ineligible.
So you don't have that yet, right?
We have it for a hundred and thirty eight. We had that last one that we got that came on late. You all might remember, we had one. That, that, it didn't come in late. They had electronic submission issues. And we got the okay to accept that they could prove that they were trying to get into the portal to show.
So a hundred and thirty eight or a hundred and thirty nine are eligible?
No, no, no.
Oh.
I said, we determined their, whether they're eligible or ineligible. Of the hundred and thirty eight, we have not determined that all of them are eligible.
Okay.
But we want you to know they've gotten through that assessment.
Okay.
We are giving you all the application. I just want to be clear. We're not, we're not screening anybody out. Once they got past the complete application process.
All right. Thank you.
Phase two budget review, this is the most intensive phase. And that's because when we give you all these applications, we want to make sure we've gone, gotten sufficient information. To determine if the costs that they're proposing are allowable under the federal regulations. Subpart E of the federal regulations have clear guidelines on what's allowable and what's not allowable. So if you submitted a budget. And you had costs that we deemed unallow, inallow, not allowable, we're contacting you. We're giving you three business days. To get us documentation to verify your costs. If you don't respond, we're giving you one shot. We're giving you a final notice after that response. So what this does is create a five business day window. Some of these are capital expenditure projects with a bunch of quotes. Um, with, with, with work from the architect to the engineering, then to the phase two. We're dealing with labor weight, uh, the weight, Davis Bacon, that kind of situation. So it's, it's not simple. Some have put in much larger grant applications. So we're dealing with like thirty nine, forty million dollar budgets. So with that said, we're now in that portion of the phase two budget review. We have completed third, third twenty eight, thirty six are in process. The rest of them, T B A needs to be assigned to one of my auditors because auditors are doing the budget review. Grant man, grant specialist did the eligibility determination. So we matched up expertise with the type of services required. So we expect to have all of them assigned by the end of this week and completed by next week. So.
Somebody submits an application. Parts of the budget will be possibly ineligible on the guideline.
Mm-hmm.
Parts of the budget may not.
Yep.
You will identify that.
You will know it. You will, you will know. We're good. We're giving you all, all the information. So, yeah.
You want to make sure.
Yeah. So we'll tell you what's, what of their budget, the cost they were eligible and the amount that was ineligible. Okay. So, unallowable, I used the wrong terminology. So we'll be finished. Phase two budget review. We have on our schedule, not next Monday, but the following, because we have a Q C process. We have the first auditor does it and then it's, then a manager reviews to make sure, it's a Q C process to make sure it's that, as accurate as possible. So then we'll be ready for you all. The evaluation team. Uh, this other information, none of this has changed. We have two hundred and eighteen million dollars in application. Um. For the internal project applications, that, that amount hasn't changed for the seventeen. And then from the approved council project, the eighteen million, we're getting grant applications. We are finally getting them their grant execution packages. So for those projects that were approved, they're getting their subrecipient agreements. We, we have legal reviewing them, but they're getting ready to get their package so they can get signed. And start to have access to the money. And that's the eighteen projects that, or the eighteen million in projects that you all have already approved.
Did you review these budgets with these projects?
A hundred percent. We actually met with them. We took it a step further. We met with them because when you all approved them, you didn't have budgets. We had them go back and do an application. Even though they were already approved, but so you will have a file if you're subject to audit by the treasury, we made, we had them go back and do the application. Then we did an interview with them. Then we did, made them do, give us a budget so that their package would look like all the other packages. It's just, they had the great resolution. So that made it that. So. Rules of my, the evaluation process. This will start for you all around November fourteenth. This is our recommendation. Let me explain where this recommendation is coming from. I will say that you all are an anomaly. Because I've been dealing with twenty plus cities, counties. Um, it's probably more than that. In the state, the councils have not. I, I'll just be honest. I have not worked with a council who was the evaluation team. I usually work with three to five people. And usually they come from like the grants area or they, somebody from a town. It's a combination of people that. You know, usually work in that environment. So I'm, my recommendations for you all. For these rules of engagement are because these are federal funds. And so it's not an option. You have to do things like a conflict of interest. It's not an option. If you have a relationship, and we'll define relationship when we do the training, you have to conflict out. You can't participate in their evaluation process, or the county is liable. So what happens is if a federal auditor comes in and determines that that money was ineligible, the county then has to pay it back. So you don't want to do that. It's called recapture. And so you've spent, I'm, I'm not trying to scare you, but as I said, because I'm not, I want to make sure the rules protect you all. That's, let me put it that way. I'm protecting you. So rules of engagement, if y'all haven't heard of that movie, these are the engagements to protect you as you do these evaluations. Um, we're hoping aggressive, award, non-award letter somewhere at, around January the fifteenth. Of twenty twenty three. Um, I've discussed this. I really at one point hoped the council is comfortable enough that we can publish some dates. Because the, you know, you have a hundred and forty applicants for lack of, they want to know what's going on. And so we. I, I understand, once we get through this, that you all, maybe we can come to a comfort level. Maybe we say by January thirty first, there'll be some notification so that the general public will know. People are trying to make financial decisions. About their organizations about, so it, it becomes critically important to them. Okay, these recommended rules, ensure integrity, objectivity and fairness in the evaluation process. And we're, that's why we're going to do training. Um, and the training again is to protect you because we're going to make sure we understand the guidance. I put some specific areas. Under section two hundred point two oh five, federal awarding agency review of merit proposals. It has to be an objective process of, of evaluating federal award applications and assist it as a pass through. And accordance with written standards set forth by the federal awarding agency, which is the treasury. So that's where we go back to the uniform guidance. So these are, this is required. So what we're going to recommend is that each council member sign and certify. To what we hope to form as the final rules of engagement. So before you start the evaluation process. And, and you all may determine you like some, you don't like some. I strongly recommend that everybody certify to it and sign to it. Five years from now, when they finally get around auditing, you don't know who the council members will be. That will be a part of your documentation to support the integrity of this process that you all undertook as a council. Rules, we're going to execute the following. Every council member, conflict of interest. So I'm going to give you the list. Of all the sub, all the applicants. I'm asking you to review the list. And you're going to sign, if you, if you have a conflict, you have to identify it. We will define conflict because it's, it's defined what that means, like what types of relationships. Then at that point, that becomes a part of the permanent file for these applications. Um, confidentiality, external, internal. We're setting this up so that as each council member, they do, you will do. An individual evaluation and not, you will not, it will not be a roundtable. Because to protect the integrity of the evaluation process. And the, on a merit base, you'll be given access to applications, asked to do your individual evaluations. We will tally up the scores for you and we will tell you the average points and grading system. And you'll say, okay, they met the minimum requirement from a grade perspective or a score perspective. So they go in the pool. For those that we can asit, consider for award. Now, you don't have two hundred and eighteen million dollars. So if everybody, you're gonna, will then figure out how we divvy that, how, not we, how you all divvy that out. But just talking about the process. And then a code of conduct, which is really the rules of engagement. So these are normal. They're not, usually it's inherent in the evaluation team. Because this is a different evaluation team, we have to, we have to make, we have to create this. Usually it's inherent. They've already done it. Because they do evaluations all the time. But for you all, we need to make sure that's part of the file. So then we'll have evaluation team training. We'll go over the compliance. We'll go over the merit base. And then we're going to use the application portal for how you all are do the individual evaluation. And then those training materials, we're going to make sure you have video. So when you're doing your individual training evaluations, if you want to refer back to some of the things we said. You can just listen to the video again. So we're trying to make it. I mean, it's a time constraint for you all. So our job is to make it as, as seamless as we can and as efficient as we can. Any questions so far? Okay. The next, before the evaluation starts, I'm going to ask you all to determine what would be the minimum score. Right now, the evaluation scorecard is based on seventy five points. This was in the no flow. So based on seventy five points total. I'm going to ask you, and this is my recommendation, let's say that you say eighty percent, like the school grades. Eighty percent, if they get a score of eighty percent, which is sixty points, then they become eligible for award. If they get a score less than that, that means you and your colleagues had certain areas in that evaluation score that they must have had deficiencies. Now, if you were dealing with ten applications, the process might be different. You're dealing with a hundred and thirty nine. And ultimately, if y'all want to spend that money anytime before twenty twenty four. You're going to have to set, set some parameters that you all can live with. So you all would tell us what that would be. If fifty points is too hot, is too high, and you want it to be seventy five percent, you pass with a C. Then we'll, the, the points would be fifty five points. So when you see the evaluate, the sum, the average scores, you're just going to see the score. So you won't see what you evaluated or you evaluated. You won't see, there won't be discussion. Which actually, it lends itself, if, if I take you through the regulations and we go to train, I'll talk to code of conduct. That's one of the things you can't do. It's supposed to be an objective process, extremely objective. And I'm trying to. Way that we're going to propose. So that would be something. I recommend sixty points. That might be too high. You might want seventy five percent closer to, closer maybe to fifty five points. And I just had the scorecard, you can see what the total points is. And everybody that submitted the application, they had the scorecard when they submitted the application. Application, this is the. If we were to try to print. A hundred and thirty nine applications and all the documentation that came with it, it would be approximately over three thousand pages. And if we made notebooks, y'all would have full volumes. Now, I'm going to say this, under federal award, the Paper Reduction Act is real. You're, you're not even supposed, they're very real about reducing the use of paper. So this project is, is. It, it's going to have to be automated. And we're going to set you up. We're going to make it real easy. We're going to give you username and password. You're going to have your own site where all the applications will be there for you in folders, clearly named. With documents clearly labeled. So if, for those, we're saying five business days, where you have to, uh, review a pool of applicants that you'll talk about. You can do it at your discretion. Just meet the deadline for when they're due. So that way we're not, um, we're being sensitive to everybody's time. We're not trying to put you in a time crunch. So, and I just said that. So there will be a folder for each applicant and that'll be what's in there. They will have, you will have your own individual, nobody will even see your link. My staff won't even see it except for our I T person that sends it to you. We won't even access it until after the deadline for submission of evaluations. So the only way information is shared is if you elect to, if you do it outside of the process. But within the process, we've tried to build some controls. Uh. B N C will upload the applications in pools. So we're not trying to give you a hundred and thirty nine at one time. We think that's crazy. So what we're trying to do is these were the pools. If you go back to a previous slide, you saw these were like the areas of funding. So it's applications within these areas. So we're going to give you the, we're going to give you the pools. We're going to say this week, you're getting applications for social infrastructure and water sewer. We're going to give them to you and then give you five business days to do your evaluation forms. And your evaluation forms, you'll just have to type in. You don't have to print. You don't got to upload. You just got to do your scores. And then it'll add it up for you. That's all you need to do. Review the documents and to do, do the scores. But. Yes.
Just came into my head. Now, when we're doing this process individually. And we're evaluating each app. And you would suggest we go through every single lap and put. And you would suggest we go through every single lap and put an evaluation on each one?
Mm-hmm.
Score. And is it incumbent upon us still to return or submit that at the end so that our total personally falls under that ninety-four million?
No, you don't have to submit anything because your completed form, we'll, we're going to access your completed evaluation in four months.
Do we have to make sure it's under that ninety-four million or what?
No, no, you don't need to worry about the award amount yet. First, let's keep the pool of those that are eligible.
Okay, alright.
And then you all are going to have different problems. Then you have to figure out. Let's say a hundred billion. You still only, you haven't agreed to a bucket yet, but you still, you're not going to give a hundred million. So you're going to have to figure out.
Okay. And my second question is this training you're going to provide, is it in a group setting like this?
However you want.
Because we have to watch with the sunshine mom or to five people together in a room or will it be virtual training?
It's however you all prefer. Either or, a combination. If you'd rather do it, you know, depending on people's schedules, we'll make ourselves available. With flexibility. So this is where, so we're going to give you a deadline. That pool, we, we're going to put out these, this is the pool. Those applications are going to be there. We're going to give you a deadline for submission of your, completion of your evaluation, a deadline and a time. When that time hits, you will be shut out. You will not be able to go into those applications. We will then, when we give you the next pool, we'll give you the access to the next pool. We, we're going to shut it down. So if it's five o'clock on whatever date, at five oh one, just like applications. I don't know if anybody tried the application on the portal. Shut it down. And then so, if only six people do evaluations, we're going to do the average of the six. The good thing about this, because it's the average of the total scores, you know, doesn't matter, huh? But it's incumbent on you. Otherwise, this money will never get awarded. So we're, go ahead.
Just a quick suggestion, you keep mentioning five days.
Business days.
Right. Uh, I, I would hopefully include weekends. A lot of us, we're doing this on the weekends.
Okay.
Because we work full-time.
That's why I say five business days so you'll get a week. Five business.
Unless it's Monday to Friday.
Yeah, I never, you have a weekend.
Okay.
Yeah, you have a weekend. That's why we didn't say five days because you might not get it for five business.
Thank you.
So I just said this, but once the pool is closed, you won't have access. You can go log back on there and it won't let you back in. Don't be mad at us. The pool closed and we're done. And so we're then going to tally them up, average score. We're going to let you know what the total scores were and what the average was as we do each pool, then ultimately at the end. But at that point, what's done is done. You won't know how somebody else evaluated. You won't know. So hopefully too, this gives the process more integrity, keeps the integrity. Not saying you would do anything that's not. But from an applicant, from a citizen, I'd be concerned about how the, this way you can say, well, you know what? I know if they shared, they had to share it behind the process. The process was designed to protect the integrity of this process. So just, if that's your cousin, he shouldn't, you shouldn't have done his evaluation anyway because once we determine your conflict out, you will not get that application. That won't be in your pool. That's why we need to know. We won't even, you won't even see. So you won't have, so you can't do an evaluation card. So you can't, this score. And I will say, if we become aware, if through a whistleblower, it's, or, or, I, you know, I just, this is a federal law whistleblower. I'm always caught. If somebody becomes aware, we will bring it to the councils and make you aware that this, we were advised and we'll ask you to, we'll go through a due diligence to figure it out. And then at that point, if it's determined that that person shouldn't have done the evaluation, it'll be pulled. And their score will no longer be and will retaliate unless the council wants to do something else. But this, they'll pull from evaluations. You can do additional. But that's the minimum. Um, so then we're going to update, as I said, we're going to let you know what the total scores are within three business days. So you'll be able to see, okay, these are the total scores for that pool. We're going to add, when they're all done, you're going to get a final list. Hopefully you'll stick to your rules that you set up, rules of engagement, whatever that grade is, that average grade they have to have, whether it's a B or a C, whatever it is, and then they become the eligible, uh, applicants for more. Then you'll have to look at the dollar amounts and then determine, and we can do it, we've done it several ways, but coming up percentages, we can agree weighted average, but whatever that offer pool that you want to, you know, we're recommending, I think fifty-five million. I think that was our recommendation. It's on the slides. It's recommendation for this pool for the grant award fifty-five million. If y'all want to, I, I skipped that slide probably too fast. Okay, so we're recommending, since you have eighteen point five already approved, that's money's gone. So that's gone. No so applications, we're recommending fifty-five million for that pool. Leaving you though, internal project applications are seventeen million and we're working on those. But then available funding for additional projects, twenty-one million. So we're still, there's a healthy, um, reserve cushion. But that's our recommendation. Y'all haven't, y'all, I, I keep, I, I was asking, I was like, so what's the proper rules for requesting? You know, things like, you know, if you all think this, this is your offer plan. Actually, this could be published. You could clean it up and prettier. But we could publish these once you agree to those buckets. And that's what everybody's doing. They're picking buckets. They're like, look, we, this money's all over the place. So if you agree with those buckets, then you can say to the general public, oh, there's only fifty-five million for this pool of the two hundred and eighteen million dollars in applications. So you can almost bet that you won't get a hundred percent of what you, but if you're awarded, even if you're eligible for award, that you will not get, um, a hundred percent. Okay, so then once we get to that point where we're down, I'm sorry. Each council member, okay. Once we get to that point where we're down to, um, once we tell them their award amount. So you generally award amounts are published. I don't know if you all do that, but generally they're published on the website, notifications of publication of awards. Actually, that is a re-federal, federal requirement that award notification be published, um, under uniform guidance. So that's published on the site. You can look on your organization and say, yay, we got it. Or yay, no, we didn't. Then at that point, we send them what's called a grant execution package. It includes their subrecipient agreement. It includes, they will not, we request that they do a budget based on the new approval award amount. So now we're saying, okay, you asked for five hundred thousand, you're getting two hundred thousand. We need the budget to see how you're going to use the two hundred thousand. We just don't accept, you know, if, you have to really be able to demonstrate how you're going to use that, that money to meet your performance requirement. So we understand you can't do the same things with less money, but what can you do? And we still need that budget for. So they'll certify that they have things like a financial management system. They'll do a conflict of interest certification, a code of conduct, same things here. And that will go out. They'll then submit it. And then at that point, I guess the council through a resolution or however you all are going to do the final approvals. I don't know if it'll be all at one time. I don't know the process. But that'll be the process of then getting those documents and getting the money on the street. And we hope that to happen sometime in January, the end of January. So timeline wise. Um, so we're, we're recommending the training between the eighth and the fifteenth. That's up. You all have to make that determination. We can, we're trying before the holidays to be honest with you. We know people start shutting down. Even between Thanksgiving and Christmas, it gets worse. And then between Christmas and New Year's, it gets worse. So we're trying to make this. And as I said, it can be virtual. It can be a before meeting, after a meeting, because I only need an hour. Let me, I, I need to tell you all that. It's only about forty-five minutes to an hour. It's not going to be, and you're going to have the video, I mean, the audio. The recording to listen to. And you're going to have document, you know, material. So you'll have backup. I know that. I saw that. I, that's just the starter and date. I'm hoping that we, that's, that's because the applications will be ready. Everything will be done. So I'm, I'm, we want to get you doing. And now these are what I'm looking at for the pools. Remember the pools, applications, potentially this kind of deadline, starting with November fourteenth and then twenty-first, the first two. So I'm trying to make sure I give you five full days and they include a weekend. And then of course, getting a notice of award letters out by the tenth, published by the thirteenth, and then grant execution packages through February tenth. Is that a lot?
No, November's going to be a very busy month for everybody here.
I think your constituents will be really happy though.
Yeah, I understand.
It's the holidays. I would even say for y'all in November, yeah, because I'm trying to, I had to take in Thanksgiving. That's why you'll notice, what is that? Pool, one of the pools, pools two. See, it goes to December second because of Thanksgiving and the day after. So I wasn't crazy. I gave ten days instead of, because of holidays. And to have it done before Christmas, before the, about the week of Christmas. So what would really facilitate this process is one, the rules of engagement. If we can get, if that works for you, I can get them. They, I don't even have to get them. I'll get them out of this PowerPoint. I'll get them in another format. Submit them to the county and to Brian and to, to Mr. Robinson and he'll get them to legal. We'll get it done and we can get started.
Okay.
Yes, I would let you know, we've talked, we've had too many conversations that we, Brian's had more. The thought was given, their review and the processes that I've seen in Lucerne is to take this rules of ROEs, rules of engagement proposed from this sheet and turn it into a graph ordinance. And thereby you all commit, this is the ordinance that gets, is that aligned, Mr. Skeen? Now, I may not necessarily close your boat, but it's, it's at least something that you agree to. But I'll leave that up here.
I believe we do an order that requires first reading and second reading of the term. Resolution will get it. He's all right.
Well, I said ordinance. I think, I'm, I apologize. I said resolution. Something that you all sign up for. Because some way of codifying this other than here's the slides, because your memories will be short. We don't remember.
Well, I, I always think about five years from now. I'm just being honest with you. I think I'm an auditor. I've come in federal government all the time. And when we come in, I know what we do. And I, and I know generally the people that may have been a part of the process are no longer there, to be honest with you. So then we're like, where your file speaks for itself. And if your file's not speaking for yourself, you're going to have, you're going to have a problem.
Is there any way possible to move you up? After we gave you my training.
Oh, about move it up? Yes. It is, we can, we can start, I guess, to, to move it up. What are we, next, Monday is the thirty-first.
Right.
We can start it next week. I mean, I need you all to give us the date. The training for us is a, we, we, just tell us when. We can.
I think that would give you a little more latitude.
It really would. It, it really, but as I said, I know this is a, I know this is a heavy load for you all. This is a heavy, y'all haven't seen the number of pages with these applications, the supporting documentation and all of those things.
Training's not.
Oh, we not, we just going to give you guidance. You're going to have to read it. You have the old scorecard.
I agree, Ms. McGinnity. You should do the thirty-first of October, start the training.
Okay, well, I only need one commitment from you all for a training day. So you just tell me what date. We'll set it up, whether it's a webinar, we can do a webinar and, and everybody can sign. Or you can just let me know what training day. Because it has to be.
Mr. West here. Tuesday, the first of October. So budget, yeah, budget meeting, five o'clock. Okay, we put an hour at the end of that, or first for our training.
Now you're going to have to trust me on this because I'm going to be in Atlanta at another county that we do opera in Atlanta on the first. But Marilyn, my, my grant, my manager, she can handle this with no, yeah.
We think we're all going to be here.
Is everybody available? We wanted to do it before.
We're scheduled first. Of course. That's correct. Where's the directions? Take the first hour? Okay, we should do it before. Get that? Ready you all?
I think work's in the time of that.
I love it.
Mr. Lombardo, just a question?
Yeah, sure.
I don't see a problem with sunshine law, all levels of training. We're not making any decisions for the county.
I agree.
Yeah, if the public wants to sit here during the training, they can do it.
Yeah, certainly.
I don't think we have to advertise that thing. I don't.
Alright, good. Is everybody okay with that then?
Yeah, November first, wish you for the, at four o'clock.
Four o'clock on the first prior to the. Probably fine. Yeah.
Here.
We can, I can arrange. Sure. Yeah, everybody else is okay with that. Yeah.
That'd be fantastic. And y'all are ready for the rest of it, right? That's what, that made my evening. So that's it. I have no other, if there's any other questions.
I just have one question for you really quick. What, what we're doing our evaluation, will there be a, a space somewhere in that evaluation form for each application where we can maybe put, uh, like a personalized comment as to where?
Please don't put a personalized comment.
Well, not a personalized meaning like I'm going to sign my name, but like maybe like a justification for why that, uh, you don't think that would be a good idea.
Remember the part about objectivity?
Sure.
That is really big with the federal award dollars because from the general public, you don't even want the appearance of subjectivity. So actually, in a, if, if I was at HUD, we used to do a lot of, we would disqualify your evaluation because you put that, that comment.
Okay.
Yeah. You can take things like the program, just say, you, that's why we don't have a lot of comments field.
Got it.
Just, and you know, because you don't want the project to be impacted by it. Because, because your evaluations will be.
What I meant by that was just like, you know, for example, if, if it was, you know, for a housing project or something like that, I would say, okay, this, I believe that this specifically, you know, falls under the rules that are in the bill.
When we go through training, I'll give you the exact reason why that may not be good. That's why I want to do.
That's all I meant by that.
Yeah, I understood. Nothing, not like this is my friend and give it a, I got it. But I, I got it. I got that. But this is why too, we want to do the training. So we can work through these, you know, these kind of potential mind fields. That's it.
Any other questions from the school? Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, next up, we have the PFM debt service presentation.
Can we change that?
Everybody.
Brian, are we going to put it up on the screen? Okay, perfect. Alright, well, good evening, everyone. While that's being that's here with PFM, been representing the county for quite some time when it comes to debt issuance. And so this is more or less kind of one of my annual, uh, get togethers with county council as you're going through the budget process. Thought it was helpful just to give you a real quick overview of the county's debt and also just to sort of set the stage and kind of get the green light regarding next year's tax anticipation note. So kind of sounds far away, but if we move forward with the tax anticipation note, there's an action that needs to occur yet this calendar year for the transaction to actually close, say, January third of next year to provide operating funds for the county. So just want to hit on a couple of different things for you this evening. So feel free to stop me at any point if you have any questions. As far as, uh, kind of the main topics, just going to go through a real quick general market update. I'm sure all of you are reading or, or watching on TV what's going on in market, kind of very crazy times right at the moment. And then, um, a real brief overview of the existing debt, talk about the tax anticipation note and then just hit on the county's credit rate. So just the two charts I wanted to go through as far as the interest rate environment. So for the tax anticipation, what we care about, there are short-term interest rates. And again, just to refresh our own memory, what a tax anticipation note is. So this is a short-term borrowing. It's a one-year note. It was actually less than one. The county's tax anticipation note is usually six months or less. Um, so it cannot go over, uh, different calendars. So if you issue it on January third, it's got to be paid back uh, by the latest, by December thirty-first of that year. But again, the county has shown a lot of fiscal restraint over the years and paid it back basis by June halfway through the year, uh, to save on interest expense. And it's worked out real well. So because it's such a short-term debt instrument to provide operating funds, we really only care about the real short-term interest rates. And that's what the Federal Reserve, uh, controls. And so here's a chart that goes back, back to nineteen ninety-eight. Just shows what the, the Fed funds rate, uh, a lot of you probably have, have heard about, uh, on, on, on TV that it's changed quite a bit this calendar year. So just so there's no surprise, this coming year's tax anticipation of the interest rate will look substantially different than the interest rate on the, on the tax anticipation note that the county did for this current year. They closed on January second of two thousand and twenty-two. We've seen, you can see on the right-hand side of this chart, the five different increases of the Fed funds rate that have occurred so far this year. And we're going to see another one, probably another big one in November and probably another big one in December. Um, so again, knowing that your rate is going to be higher and it's just not Luzerne County's rate, it's basically all the different transactions that are occurring out there. So we do really care about the short-term rates when it comes to this debt instrument. So very applicable to what the county may be doing, very sure. The next page is more of the long-term interest rates. So right now, the county is not contemplating borrowing any funds on a long-term basis, fifteen, twenty, thirty years. No projects to finance um, at the moment, and there's no refinancing opportunity. So sometimes in the past, we'd come before county council and say, we can. So sometimes in the past, we'd come before county council and say, we can refund some debt, save some money, there's not that opportunity right now and I'll explain here in a little bit. But overall, you know, again, this chart here goes back to the early 90s and you can see on the right-hand side where we are right now, things have definitely ticked up and that's basically mainly occurred this calendar year as well. Mid-January of this year, we started to see rates take off and they've continued to increase throughout the year. Looks like a very big spike in interest rates for this year and it is, but when you compare it to the historical averages, we're still kind of right, right in the middle. And you see that box kind of on the left-hand corner and in the blue where it says the current rate is a, for this index, this is a 10-year municipal index, is a 3.34 and about 54% of the time, rates are greater. So although, again, we've seen a large spike this year, we're still at historical averages when it comes to long-term borrowing. So that's a real quick background on the market itself, as far as now the county's debt. So this is sort of a table that looks very similar to when we do do a transaction for the county, we have to put some numbers together with your legal counsel to file with the state. This shows the total debt of the county and the different notes and bonds. So the total general obligation debt is about 155 million, broken up by each one of those series and then there's what we call some lease rental debt, that's kind of labeled that way per the state that was issued through the Industrial Development Authority in 2017 and a small Penn Vistland. So after you take out some exclusions, your total direct debt is about $178 million. Then as far as what does that mean from a budget perspective, so that's your total amount of principal, that's not principal and interest, that's just principal when we talk about debt outstanding. Now, on page six, this is on the left-hand side, what we call Exhibit A, this is your annual debt service. And so now, when we talk about debt service, that's your principal that you pay back on an annual basis plus your interest. And so you see on the bars on the left-hand side, you're level at about, call it 26 million or so per year until you see the substantial drop-off in 2030, so not, not too far away. So level debt, and whenever we do a transaction for the county, we need to make sure not only we follow federal law but also state law, so that's why your debt has to either be level or decreasing on an annual, on an annual basis. And then we look at Exhibit B on the right-hand side, this is just a real quick, what we call borrowing capacity calculation. So just to kind of give you an idea of how much borrowing capacity you do have, again, there's no plans for issuing debt but something we just calculate, right now, your remaining capacity is over 600 million of debt that you could borrow if you wanted to. But again, we know there's no plans to do that, but, so you do have a very large amount of legal capacity if you would ever need it. Exhibit C, the breakout between fixed-rate debt where the payment's fixed for the life versus variable rate, you have a pretty conservative debt portfolio, which is good. 100% of the debt is fixed rate. And then down Exhibit D, this is one of the reasons why we're not actually able to refund any of your debt right now, because all your existing debt actually has very low rates, which is a good thing. So in the bottom right-hand box in Exhibit D, this shows the average rate for the respective bond issues and note issues. So 2.17 for the one, a 2.79, a 2.86 and a 3.68. So overall, when you look at, kind of average out your interest rates for your debt of that 170 million, very, very low. So, you know, again, that's, the county's, I think, in a very good position from a total debt outstanding amount from an interest rate perspective of what your debt, what the interest rate you're paying on your debt. And also as far as a rapid amortization, so not too many issuers, counties, schools, cities have such a short maturity for your debt portfolio, if you go back to Exhibit A on the left-hand side, you're, as of right now, debt-free basically after 2030, so you're paying down that debt pretty, pretty quickly, which is good. And then this just kind of breaks down more of each individual bond issue or note issue and what's due on a, on an annual basis. Not so much for discussion tonight, it's more for your budget office when it comes time for that, so again, just more, more background. But one thing, if you do look at the, on the left-hand side, where it says call date and you just kind of run your finger across to the right on those different issues, so you have, the call date is basically the prepayment date that, you know, we could look at maybe refinancing some debt, you don't really have anything in the near term. Most of it's 2025 or 2027, there's always, that's to refinance any of your existing debt with new tax-exempt debt, which is ideally what you'd wanna do, cause tax-exempt debt is lower cost than taxable debt. So there's no opportunity for a couple of years. Now, we have seen some weird market anomalies over the years where you could refinance some of your debt on a taxable basis before these call dates, but right now, does not make any sense to do that, so obviously, we're not gonna recommend it or really spend any time. So we're always looking at your debt portfolio to see if there is an opportunity to save money and right now, there is not. Kind of the last component of your debt portfolio, you do still have what's called a basis swap outstanding. That was effective, if you go through the bull points, almost 10 years ago in 2013, the contract was actually entered into well before that point in time, but the cash flows kind of started, they started in 2015. They are related to the 2015 bonds, again, they mature in about eight years, so then the swap will be fully matured and no longer exist at that point as well. The, the concept of the swap kind of gets into a lot of details, but basically, back a long time ago, the county received about $2.5 million of upfront money, this was before our time representing the county, that county received about $2.5 million and then that, on an annual basis, kind of a little bit more frequent cash flow, there's a exchange of payments between the county and the banks involved here, and that's PNC and JP Morgan. For the most part, over the years, the annual cash flows have more or less negated each other. Maybe you were to the good a little bit, maybe you were to the worst a little bit, but we're not talking huge dollar amounts. But again, remember, you've got that $2.5 million upfront. We're always looking and we have discussions about terminating it, you can always terminate it before it fully matures. And right now, the termination value, if you did want to terminate it, is, you know, kind of rounding up, call it $300,000. So if you said, Scott, we wanna just terminate this thing, get this off our books, it would cost the county, not save the money, but cost the county about $300,000. That's pretty low compared to where it's been in history. We've seen it substantially higher than that over the years. So again, I don't think there's anything to do right now, but it's just something that we always have the opportunity to terminate it at any, at any point in time, if you'd like, but it's really working the way it's supposed to work, there's no issue with it. So at the moment, we would recommend just kind of keeping things going as we have. And then the last point, well, second last point for this evening, is the tax anticipation timeline. So what we'd like to do, we're having a discussion this evening, we then like to put out the RFP, Request for Proposals tomorrow to different lenders, have a couple of weeks for those to be out on the street and then come back later in November showing the results of that RFP process, assuming we get the results that are good, and maybe go through the process for adopting the legal documents, maybe late November, maybe that goes into early December, we'll just have to kind of fine-tune the timeline a little bit. But then we just need to make sure it closes on January 2nd. So we'll work with your budget office and your legal counsel and other folks to kind of hone in on that, but that's sort of what we're thinking. We'd really like to get the RFP out tomorrow, get that in the hands of the banks. What we'd like to do from a dollar perspective, if you look on the right-hand side, that shows the dollar amount of the tax anticipation that the county has moved forward with over the past, you know, say, eight years. It's ranged anywhere from 14 to 20 million over those different years. I think we'd like to go out with the RP saying that the county is looking to issue a tan in the approximate amount of $14 million. That way, it gives you some more time to think through it, lets your budget office kind of work through some more numbers as far as what the cash flow deficit may look like and what the sort of legal size limit of the train would be. But that way, if it comes back and you only need 13 million or 12 million, we can easily lower the amount. But I think we just wanna kind of get a number out there that's kind of in the ballpark. So that's really sort of the, you know, we don't really need any actions, just wanna make sure kind of everyone's okay with getting that non-binding RP out on the street tomorrow. You can always sign, you don't wanna do anything, even after the responses come back, but we'd like to go out with about a $14 million size for that. And then lastly, for the credit rating, we just always like to kind of do a real quick refresher. So right now, the county, since 2019, has a great credit rating, it's a, it's from Standard and Poor's, it's an A-minus rating. It made a substantial improvement back in 2019, for a couple of years, it was a triple B minus and then prior to 2017, for a couple of years, it was actually double B plus, which was a non-investment grade rating at that time. So we've seen some nice increases, some positive movements in your credit rating over the years. Right now, again, it is an A minus and sort of what does that mean in the big picture? If you go down to that box in the bottom right-hand corner, it just sort of shows the spectrum of credit ratings. AAA is the best credit rating you could have, then you have what's called the double A category right below there and then you have the single A category, Lucerne County falls in that single A category, investment grade, very, very good. And then the last kind of bucket in the investment grade is the triple B category and then anything below there is non-investment grade. So, you know, again, you're sitting very well, the credit rating is very important for purposes such as the trend, the lenders look to that. That's why you have been, you're getting the past couple of years, very competitive interest rates on the tax anticipation note, so it is an important kind of feature for the county to try to keep that credit rating where it is or even improve it. And so what the rating agency does, when they publish their report, they do actually put in there ways the rating could improve or ways that the rating could weaken, and you see just a couple of bull points there as far as potential things that could make the credit rating improve, it maintain budgetary balance while addressing rising expenditures and then ways that could weaken the rating would be adopt structurally inbound budgets and reserves weaken materially. And here is a quote from the last rating report that, you know, just kind of acknowledges the structural operating imbalances that were there in the past, but then they were corrected over the years and obviously, there's a lot of hard decisions that were made over those years to, to correct that, got us back into the positive results, building up some reserves. And so again, they look at that stuff very closely. And even though you're not, you want to turn bond issue right now to finance any long-term capital projects or refinance any debt, the rating agency could still call up at any point in time and usually, they like to do a touch point almost annually and they could adjust that rating accordingly, up or down depending on any of the new financial data. So it's just a very important, it's just like our own personal credit ratings, if you will, when you go to get a loan, try to buy a car or buy, you know, get a mortgage, they look to your credit rating, same as lenders do for the county, for trans and other things as well. So that's, those are really the highlights, but again, I think the really, the main thing is, you know, sort of put some of these numbers in perspective as you're going through the budget or really more just to get us focusing on the tran and the timeline here over the remaining rest of this quarter to get to some funds for January 2nd to help pay, pay some of your bills throughout the early part of next year as your tax monies start to come in. So with that, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
I think, yeah, I'll defer to Mr. Swett, but I think it kind of depends on, it depends on what budget's finally approved.
So, yes, we're gonna get approval for 14 and if we can whittle that down to 13 or 12 as we work towards the end of the year, but we'll get approval for 14. Scott had all the years on there, not counting the, the state impasse, the highest was 18 and we whittle it down to 14, if we can do 13 or less, we'll do that, but we'll get approval for 14 in the RFP. It's not gonna be 0.67%, it'll probably be four or more, I would think.
Yeah, you're gonna be, you're probably in the three, in the high threes maybe.
We're talking about five times or so.
Yeah, and again, that's no reflection on the county, that's just the market.
Amazing, our budget, we got that kind of amount in order to affect the trend.
Yeah, and we do, I think we put in 3.5 or 3.75, just cause we knew the markets were going up, so it's not, we didn't put in the mark, the rate from last year. We knew that we weren't getting that.
Now, the good news is, with rates going up, there's good news, bad news, so bad news is the interest expense you pay on that loan is higher than what you experienced in the past, so that's not the good. The, the good news is that, assuming we do a tran where you get all the proceeds on the day of closing and you invest that money, you're actually now actually able to invest that money at a better rate than you were before. Before, you were investing that money close to zero, cause it's just, that's just the way the market was. Now, depending on where you park that money, you're getting decent returns on that, so it's not a dollar-for-dollar offset, but it's, there's a little bit of good news in what's going on in the markets out there.
Brian, I guess, I have somewhat of a bizarre question, because the rates are low right now, for what part is it possible to initiate the tran borrowing process now, before we wait till January and get the rate locked in early before it goes up?
Well, that, that's sort of kind of what we're doing, so if we get the RFP out tomorrow, then we'll get those back, say, in about three weeks and those rates that come back in three weeks should then hold until January 2nd. So we have a little bit of interest rate risk for the next couple of weeks, now the Fed does meet next, well, next week, right, yeah, early November. So a lot of that's already priced in, there's already expectation that the Fed's gonna increase rates again.
Should you call the Fed and ask?
Did you take my call? I tried, but they didn't take my call. So, yeah, we, we do wanna try to get those rates in a couple of weeks from now so that we don't have to wait much, much later. Any other questions or thoughts?
Any other questions from council?
Okay, we're back in a few weeks, thank you.
All right, next we have a discussion regarding 51 million for the LSA. Mr. Scott, if you would want to request this.
Yeah, we're questioning.
To be blunt on the agenda, because there seems to be a lot of misconception where it's holding. And I would like also the opportunity for the Ray to speak to us too, to directly involve us there.
But my biggest concern about this money, which I think a lot of people in the audience don't realize, we have no guarantee yet from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for this funding. So with that being said, this money is not backed, which means that if this deal falls through for 3 million in the LSA money per year, it's gonna fall on the back of every single taxpayer. And I don't think this county's in the position to take on that debt right now, currently. And I think we can all agree that we're all in favor of 911 services, all types of services. We wanna do the best for every single municipality in this county, but we also have to watch the purchase. With that being said too, this amount of money, when it all started, the number I heard thrown out when, when I sat here, I think it was 51 million for New Bridge. I'd have to guess a year later now, that probably with inflation is around 55 million. I think we're set to receive somewhere between 45 and 47 million with all the fees and interest that's applied to this loan. That's gonna leave us short $8 million. And I don't know where that's gonna come from either. So it might be in our best interest not to close on this loan for every taxpayer of this county, because I don't think any of us would sit here and go out and borrow 75 million, receive roughly 45, pay back 30 million in interest or 1.2 million per year. It's just, it doesn't make sense to me. And that's why originally I voted no, I just didn't like the numbers, I, I don't think the numbers work. This money's, we're guaranteed a percentage every year, this LSA money. My fear is without this Commonwealth Financing Authority guaranteeing this, that they moved this money around before. And we don't know who's gonna become governor next year and nothing, I don't think, would stop them from moving it again. So unless we have that in writing, I personally would not vote for this loan. And that's all I have to say.
Mr. Thornton, first then.
Yeah, I just wanna make a couple of comments regarding the Nanicoque, West Nanicoque Bridge. I, I think most people at this table are in favor of a bridge replacement for the public safety reasons and all that, states, I agree with that. Again, we have to figure out how to pay for it. Now, I, I think I was under a misconception myself, for when, months ago, we had speakers come here who got up and spoke about the loan we would take out, which was, I don't know, 47 million at the time, then it was 50 or 51, it elevated. And I'm concerned on how to pay it back, just as anybody with a mortgage on their house, you take a mortgage out, you wanna know how you're gonna pay that back every month. So I questioned the LSA money and guaranteeing the security that it would come, and what I was told was that people are gonna always gamble, no matter what, they're gonna gamble in this state, and I agree with that. So there's no reason to believe. So there's no reason to believe that three million wouldn't come every year, because that's, that's what was spoken about in Harrisburg. Three million a year of LSA money, and our debt service would be three million a year on that loan for twenty five years. Our debt would be retired, and we would have a total payback of seventy five million, three million for twenty five years. And then we raised the issue, I, I know I did, a couple of other people. What if? What if we wanted to do some road projects around the county, say for half a million or a million? We use the money for that. And my understanding, the people in the room here at the podium said, yeah. And I said, well, I would like something in writing. And I said, I would like a document, I think you all remember this. That would say whatever the redevelopment authority is gonna use the money for. County council has to approve each project. So they can't, you know, we just don't want them running out and doing whatever they want it with the money, even though they are the redevelopment authority. We wanted some authority to approve each individual project and, and, and Mr. Riley told me, Andy Riley. Oh, yeah, we could, you could put that in there. Sure, that council has to review and approve each project along the way. But then lately it came to light, because we had a lot of discussion here in the last month or so. About doing various county roads. If we don't wanna use it all for that bridge or use it at all for the bridge. We could do tons of county roads that are in horrible shape and bridges are dilapidated and small bridges on these roads. And uh, we discussed that. No, no conclusion, but we discussed it. Well, I guess that got to Harrisburg. Because then it came back to us through various sources here in the county that, well. If you're not gonna use it for that one bridge. The project was designed out of Harrisburg. For a, a major infrastructure project and doing ten roads. At ten million dollars is not a major infrastructure project, it's ten projects. Therefore. That LSA money could be pulled back and they won't pay, they won't give any, they, they could give you a million, they could give you two million or nothing. So we didn't know that either. Uh, I was not under that impression. And then we went further to ask, well, if we do the bridge project, the Nanicoque Bridge. Is there an absolute guarantee somewhere in writing? That we're gonna get that three million a year for twenty five years? The answer is unequivocally no, there's nothing guaranteed. That you're probably gonna get it, or most likely gonna get it. I don't see why you wouldn't get it, like Mr. Scavages said correctly. You, we're gonna have a new election come November, we're gonna have a new election next November, we're gonna have new governors, new legislators. They could get together anytime in a Commonwealth Finance Authority, the CFA is responsible uh for oversight in this. They, they could change their mind at any time and say, for whatever reason, you know. We don't like Lutheran County for political reasons, they didn't support this or that. Yeah, we're not gonna give them the three million. So I wanna build a bridge. I just wanna know for sure how we're gonna fund it, and if that LSA money ever fell through. We have to pay that three million a year for twenty five years from the taxpayers. You know, and that's a big, big nut, that's a big one. That's my big concern here tonight. How do we pay for it? Without so much, so many question marks. That's all.
Okay, so I did research because that was my concern. Nothing is written in stone for Lutheran County. We don't wanna put future council. On the, on the hook for that or future taxpayers. Uh, looking into Act twenty four, section twenty, seventeen twenty four point one dash key. Pennsylvania Gaming Control Board. County redevelopment authorities, the following apply. In addition to municipalities that are eligible to receive grant funding under four P A. One, four, oh, three, relating to establishment of state gaming fund and net slot machine revenue distribution. County redevelopment authority within Homewood County, the third class shall be eligible. To receive grant funding and upon notification to the Department of Community and Economic Development. Of the issuance of debt, we see the sum of three million dollars annually for a period of twenty five years for the purpose of funding debt. Service related to the construction, maintenance and upgrades of public infrastructure projects located within the county. So right there, it does say three million dollars for twenty five years. So that's an act, that is the law. Now, as far as, you know, how many counties in Pennsylvania have casinos that would get that LSA money, there aren't that many. I know that the law was changed from municipalities getting it to counts. So there's that. Now, if we don't do the bridge, then down the road, we would have to fix the bridge. And now you're talking about a matter of how much money in the future that will fall totally upon the taxpayers. That's not a good thing. Um, there was something that was done similar to this, and it was in Monroe County. LSA money was used for the Northham, North Hampton Community College in Monroe County. And they pay, they're paying through, through the LSA gaming money, and that's a twenty-year long-term project, it's a twenty-year loan that they're taking on it. Also, uh, this is supposed to be a distribution for a five-year period of time. I don't know if I could elaborate more on that, but. Over the, the five years, we can use it on both bridge and roads. So for instance. You know, the first phase of getting this bridge started would be maybe five million dollars just to get uh. The applications and inspections and everything started, five million dollars. But then we could take maybe two million dollars out of it and put it towards roads. So it's not, it's not set on just the bridge. The money is flexible, so we can do both bridge and roads. This is what I was told. So obviously, we're hoping to be able to reach out to our other congressmen, if Cartwright is elected or Jim Bob Net, but of course, the Amuser. Reach out to them and try to get more funding in here. Uh, we need more, you know, infrastructure money coming from the federal government, and they should be able to help us. We need to reach out to them. So the, the bridge is an important uh project to start, but remember, we can also use it on roads. Uh, the arena was set up the same way. I'm sure Mr. McGinley, you could probably, probably elaborate on that, how the arena was set up that, you know, was.
Ready to set up a hotel.
Right. That's what was over, you know, over long term, you know.
Just to, just to piggyback on what Ms. McDermott said, I apologize. Um, but uh. You, you know, this, this is the possibility, just like she said, that we don't necessarily have to spend all of this money on the bridge. Once the money starts coming in, if we happen to find a, a secondary source where we can pay for the bridge for that, we should be able to use that money. Um, and additionally, the one concern that I have about trying to divvy the money out to roads immediately instead of the singular projects is that. We do have this infrastructure bill that's out there that was passed, and, and of course, we don't know how much money we're getting. We haven't heard exactly from federal government what it's going to be, but. We do know that there should be a significant number of dollars coming to Lutheran County. So, you know, the roads are going to get fixed, it's just a matter of what bucket of money we're using to fix them.
Another, one more thing, one more thing to say about that, too. Even if we were to get this, all this money to be able to fix all of our roads, our road and bridge department is not staffed to be able to do it. So obviously, that would take many years, or we'd have to contract it out.
One thing I would, for everybody to do sitting here, is to make sure that this money was approved by that authority. Because you were told isn't good enough for any of us or anyone here.
Are you talking about the redevelopment authority or from?
From the Commonwealth. We wanna see it in writing from them that they pass this on behalf of Lutheran County, that's what I'm saying. I don't wanna hear from John Doda, he said, you're good. That doesn't help us. When the residents are stuck with three million dollars in payments for the next twenty five years. And taxes are skyrocketing, and we're just sitting here wondering where we're gonna get the money from.
One, one other thing, uh. And I wanna address the three thousand acres of open land that could be developed there. Uh, I love that. I'm, I'm all about development and, and infrastructure. And I think a, a project of that magnitude, whatever ends up there. Something should end up in that three thousand acres, and we do need a great bridge to go along with that improved roadways around there. But I think some of that magnitude, which would be a huge economic boom to the area, to the county. I think the state bears some responsibility to develop that, to be a partner, and don't put that on the county. I mean, the, the state stands to benefit immensely from something like that in the long term. So a project of that magnitude, that scope, I think the state should be stepping in, even though they don't own the bridge. Well, they don't own the three thousand acres either, but they do this all over the state. They, they partner up with counties and, and they develop the, the projects. And uh, I really would like to see that pursued in, in some regard.
Uh, I do have something else, just looking through, the Pennsylvania Constitution provision against ex post back to laws provides as follows. We read this earlier than I, post back to laws impairment of uh contracts. No ex post back to law nor any law impairing the obligation of contracts or making irrevocable any grant. Of special privileges or immunities shall be passed. So that's.
That's when you pass it up. The Commonwealth, that, that authority would have to pass it, then they can't revoke it, then I would be good with it. I must share, it's not what I am.
I think it's legislation in design. I think the authority does function as.
Well, one of the hang, and, and while we went through this for the last three months, all we asked for is something in writing to put our hands on. We have yet to receive it. Have you received it? I haven't.
Mr. Sarah, do you receive more than ninety? I mean, I never talked to anybody today about this, so I felt the support and some conversations, which is great.
Yeah, because I, I, I just wanna be informed that I reach out, and I don't wanna have egg on my face. That we find out that we're on the hook for three million. I don't think it's unreasonable if they give us a piece of paper to this county. To show us that this is a done deal. Here it is.
Someone at the state.
Somebody at the state or the CFA.
There's legislature or some Commonwealth financing.
I, I would say the Commonwealth financing, since they're putting the rubber stamp on.
I don't think they have the authority or the influence.
Well.
So actually to that, though, I'm not really, I have question marks, if the money's gonna be here ten years from now.
Well, I think she cited several examples there, which pretty much tells you, yes, it will be.
If, just show us it was passed, though, that's the thing.
It has been passed.
When?
Are you talking about the Act twenty four?
No. I'm, I'm talking about our individual deal. I'm not talking about an act.
That's not what he saw.
Can we please get that, though, in writing? I, I think it's important. I don't think that's being unreasonable.
Because when I asked him at the podium here months ago. Uh, various people, Mr. Riley was one, and Senator T. Jack was here. And they even asked the banks. They said, why are you coming to council asking us to back this project? And they said, because council has taxing authority, and that's the guarantee we need to see in the bank to guarantee we'll get our money back. I said, well, the LSA money's guaranteed. They said, no, not really. The banks will not accept the LSA promise or the promises from, they need.
What's that? That was where the major project came in, that we couldn't go to the bank without a major project. So if the major project doesn't cost forty five million dollars for the bridge, then. We could use the extra money for the roads or whatever, but the bank is the one, because I was confused with that, too. The bank is the one that requests or required to have one major project. They couldn't say, oh, you have ten, twenty roads that you wanna fix. So it was the bank that said it.
But even with the one project, they still said, we need council to sign off a promise we'll always get paid, because you have the taxing authority. I said, well, what about the LSA money? And they said, no, we won't accept the LSA money as a guarantee. They said that here at the podium.
I remember. They want us to count it because of the fact we have taxing. Redevelopment for.
Right.
That's where the money's gonna go to them. They're gonna get that money, the LSA money. And then it's gonna, the only thing that we asked for specifically that night, the nights, as we went through a civil discussion. Is that the county would ask. Boarding to make sure the projects. By the council. Redevelopment Boarding, putting a lot in the site. Well, we're not gonna fix that bridge, we're gonna fix the bridge and, you know, unlocks.
And we did have five meetings about it, this will be the sixth, but on July twelfth, we had a memorandum of understanding. That we did have the redevelopment party that we did vote on.
Could we have two guys from the redevelopment authority speak about the process? If there is indeed, the CFA has to prove this, please, because maybe you have the answer, I don't know.
Mr. Lindy. I always thought it would make sense. If you could just, if you could just step up to the podium.
I always thought of it as just accept the first three million dollars without paying all these dues and be absolutely guaranteed for it. And start the process of the engineering and everything to find out if you can even build this bridge for forty seven billion dollars. This would, we always, we could always go back and, and this, this LSA thing doesn't have a time thing to it. If we take the first three million dollars without paying all these fees and, and, and guaranteeing uh into the nineteen, uh, into twenty forty seven that you're gonna pay money. Let us use that money to start the engineering and the process and get back to you with what this project would. We wouldn't have to pay any of these fees for one, two years. Three million dollars is more than enough to start that part of the project. And then you can go back, maybe these interest rates will straighten out in a little while. Right now, if you look at what I, I gave your uh. Manager there, I mean, you're committed to four to six percent, and it's gonna absolutely close at this date and that date. You're committed at that point, if you sign on with the bank at this point. But if we just take the first three million and, and. And, and use that to start the process, it would make more sense to me.
Wait, without any interest, I like.
I just wanna just say, this is what we were given by, by the bank to the authority board in terms of terms and conditions. Years one through ten, interest rate will be fixed at closing based on the preceding thirty day average of mid-year, ten-year treasury note plus two hundred basis. Based upon today's rate, taxable rate for years one through five will be five point two seven percent. On completion of projects, the rate will be fixed to the non-bank qualified taxes and rate base, based on the preceding thirty day average. Of the mid-year, ten-year treasury note plus two hundred basis points based on today's rate, which was, as of this proposal, September seventh. It was the non, non-bank.
Mr. Ray, will you go up to the microphone, please, should?
Uh, the non-bank, or the non-bank qualified tax exemption rate for years six through ten will be four point two six percent. And then eleven, years eleven through twenty, it would be preceding thirty day average uh interest rate and plus two hundred basis points. The interest rate would be three point nine five percent, interest rate cap would be five percent, and then years twenty one through twenty five. Interest rate uh would be preceding thirty day average of the mid-year, five-year treasury note plus two hundred basis points. The interest rate floor would be three point nine five percent, interest rate cap would be five point two five percent. So. This, and, and it says here at the end of the proposal, it said that it would be. Uh, this proposal expires on September twenty sixth, twenty twenty two, if not accepted by the borrower. So this is not even good. So I, myself, and I believe Mr. Lindy had questions on what would be. The parameters as far as interest rate goes and the payment schedule and all that. And besides, uh, and I didn't mean to um sidetrack Mr. McGinley. But as far as the CFA goes, we were told, the authority board was told by Mr. Riley, and I believe by bond councils as well. That the CFA, once council passed. The memorandum of understanding with the application, the CFA would have to approve. That application to see if that amount would be feasible and copacetic with all parties involved. Then it would come back to council and the RA. As far as the final project list, if that was, if the bridge was gonna be set in stone as the project. You know, for the, for the funding that was applied for. That's, that was my understanding. I believe, Mr. Lindy, that was your understanding too and the rest of the board, so. I, I don't know, this, this is just confounding to me as far as the, the goalposts keep on changing as well as the, the terms and conditions. So that's, I, I just want us to be all on the same page as far, if we can't be on the same page, at least we know where we, each other stands. That's all I'm, I think we.
Did you receive that document from the CFA that you challenged us now?
Uh, no, we didn't receive, we didn't receive anything. We were told, we were given the impression that we were waiting on it. And then the bank or the bond council would notify us and you guys. You know, and that's what I was waiting on. So I don't know about the rest of the board, but that's what I was under the impression of when. At the RA meeting, when the bond council and Mr. Riley told us, but, you know, maybe I could, I could have misinterpreted, but I. I don't think so. I think because of the fact that the CFA. The CFA is the approving authority for all, anything to do with local share account gaming grants. That's, that's. That's, that's their wheelhouse. And they have meetings and their meetings are published just like county council under the sunshine law. And it wasn't on their agenda. And I checked and it wasn't, uh, the loan for the LSA infrastructure wasn't on their agenda and they didn't vote on it. So I, 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 it took me by surprise when I saw it in the paper over the weekend that this was going to be closed this Thursday. So I, I mean, Mr. Los, I, I, I agree with Mr. Loskavich. I mean, yeah, he brings up valid points as far as he wants to figure out what's going on. I, me, Mr. Lindy, we were taken by surprise as well. So we just want to know where things stand. That's, that's all.
And, and those rates you stated were in September.
September seventh.
Since then, the Fed raised rates three quarters of a percent.
Yes.
And they're going to raise them again in November.
And, and that's why we.
So that five percent is the low ball number. It's going to be probably six percent.
Yes. And that's why we asked, myself and Mr. Lindy asked for bond council to give us the updated numbers. And I don't understand how the CFA would have approved something, you know, before, you know, before you guys did and after the interest rate, because this would all have to be factored in. Like you said, Mr. Thornton, the interest rate increase.
Just so everybody understands, when rates go up like this, originally if we were going to borrow forty seven million at a lower rate and the payback amount is seventy five million. Well, now you can only borrow maybe forty three or forty four million because of the higher interest rate to achieve that seventy five million payback at twenty five years. I had a reach goal unless you could borrow and have the same total payback.
That's correct.
That, I don't know how that's going to work, but whatever.
I agree with Mr. Lindy. I think the three million should be used for the planning and the engineering. And then you also have, and I submitted this to council today, the raise grant through the USDOT that's opening up next month, applications. So why not use that as a match? So that way you pay for not only the bridge for West Nanicoke, but also all the other projects for next year. Then we'll all be, it's a win-win situation. Why does it have to be, as like I said in my previous public comment, why does that have to be a no win situation, zero sum game?
All right, thanks, Mr. Raybo.
The other question, question is too, is like, you know, with, with the amount of proceeds from, from this, this loan, nobody knows the true cost of that bridge is going to be and where's the, the difference going to come from as far as the upside down portion of the payment, because we know inflation is taking a toll on construction as well. And, and, you know, just supplies and probably metal and like hot soap. Whereas if, if there was a six or seven or eight to ten million dollar difference of costs, who's picking up that other difference at this point in county? Where are we going to get it from? Have we even thought about that process? We haven't even discussed that at this table.
We should have estimates.
Right, but, but we haven't got.
Three billion dollars. Any estimates back at it anytime, maybe in a year, three billion dollars a year. More of the twelve billion dollars. Do all these things.
Sure.
Not for all of soft costs and all the difference from the law.
Yeah, there's no reason to kick our own. So.
Why do we still have a bank? We're going to make a true move.
We just do it. We just make an application. Just do the twelve million, top to the year.
Yes, that doesn't have to go through a different process. The bank. That approval goes to the state.
And all they've done, that if we, if we get, if we tell the bond people what, what they can do that, we gotta tell them. If you tell them.
We were asking for the, for the money out of the LSA that's annually provided.
We're telling whatever, we only have one financial institution right now making all those decisions.
Exactly.
But if we would never told them what we want, if we agreed what we wanted, then they would, they would complete the bond to do that.
No. As I told you earlier. Where's your solicitor?
Yeah.
You pay that gentleman.
Well, he wrote a letter today that we can get actually others to work.
That's what should be done. There should be something done there. So you, you know, you answer your questions already. Let's get going. The longer we wait, and I'm not, I want to push it all over. But you know, we're probably going to get three different rehards by the first of the year. And then three quarters or a half of Christian, that's sort of speculating. That's two percent more. That started being interest rate. So that's less money than.
The banks are going to get up to forty million dollars and be put somewhere. The same way that you just said earlier. You get some of that money back, there's going to be a difference. We, we don't know what to do with forty million dollars, right? You should take it and use it for something else. It's going to be a long time before we can put it out.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? All right, moving on. Uh, we've seen the discussed budget reports for September twenty twenty two.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Uh, in your pocket is the budget reports. There's the general fund and then at each quarter, you get all the funds. Uh, as always, and in the interest of time, uh, you can email me at your convenience. Uh, if there's something I can answer off the top of my head now I will, but otherwise, uh, I'll give my time to Mr. Greenwald so we can move the meeting along. And again, you can email me at any time. Mr. Greenwald's next for this budget. Oh, okay. Do we change this project? But I'm good taking questions after this. Anyone can email me at any time. Here every week.
Thank you.
We love to see you.
All right. Thank you. County manager division reports.
I don't have anything to do to report other than if you look at them. There's a new feature. We're collecting it. I'll continue to collect it if you don't want it collectively. That's mine. Tell me that. But it tries to put our arms around, uh, what are we supposed to have using term optimization? And on that snapshot of that day, how many are there? Aggregately somewhere plus or minus around two types of vacancies of which most of them are empty. Human services, sorry. You can see, notionally when we get this down every two weeks, you will see it's not as close as what we have. Short of that, um, sustaining process.
Any questions for Mr. Robertson? Moving on, discussion regarding the ordinance met in twenty twenty two fiscal year budgets from Luzern County Public Defender slash Courts. As you guys saw, you were given a resolution, which is essentially the same thing. Earlier today, we received email from our assistant solicitor, Assistant Samski. Basically upon further reflection, this item can be done via resolution instead of ordinance. Please discuss the concept tonight. It can be on the next voting session, session as a resolution, not an ordinance. And here it is. So if you want to discuss it. Oh, no, no, this, this email only went to, uh, only went to, to, uh, Ms. Raybo, I believe. Yeah. So just to clarify, that's why I ran it here. It was, it was right before, it was right before the meeting started anyway. Any discussion?
Discussion for you. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. It's a fairly straightforward request. It's a possibility.
Has somebody looked at that?
With regard to the union filing of grievance, um, I know I had thought about it. I know that the president judge and I have discussed it. I'm not disgusted with the shop steward in the office. I think this is, um, something that is basically the president judge wants to hire lawyers to do the work that my lawyers can't get to. So I don't see it as being something that they would necessarily complain about.
Probably right about that, but I think with the hoop, you, with someone who's helped the president judge party fall, at least touch base. So that hopefully we can return any other issues. That's my personal.
It's certainly a consideration, but again, after analyzing the matter and understanding that this is a short term, hopefully a short term solution to a very significant problem. The union will see that this is something to their benefit. I'm sorry.
I think we like her or dislike her. I think they would appreciate the fact that somebody talked about it. And I agree, I don't think you're going to be upset, but it's an outward mention. We will move the workload. So it's just a project relationship. You guys decide.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Discussion regarding resolution authorizing county manager to execute a lease agreement between Luzern County and Luzern County Domestic Relations.
I'll start that. I guess, Mr. Swett, you may want to preposition both. He and I have independently went to, uh, Mr. Highmarsh on different occasions and talked about, uh, about the number that is here and the delta that we have this year, but again, cannot argue necessarily with the appraisal.
Appraisal boss.
Methodology. Were you online, Paul?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So the only thing I don't have is we had talked about getting close to the number. And you, you were going to tell me what that was, but after you look at your books, or that's my understanding. Have you had a chance to assess that?
Uh, concern, uh, we're on the lease agreement, sir, and the difference? Okay. Uh, yes. Uh, I believe after some discussions with the management team at Domestic Relations, uh, and, uh, making some changes to our budget, which we are happy to present, uh, I believe we're on the agenda for next Tuesday, the first, uh, that we'll be able to close that, uh, gap by adding another two hundred thousand dollars, uh, which is primarily the difference between uh, the rent cost from last year and the revised rent cost in the lease agreement before council right now. For their, their approval and move to a voting session.
I appreciate your understanding and I hope the council would, but it gets you much closer. It gets us much closer to what we experienced last. That's all I have, sir.
Any questions? Our discussion regarding the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three Act thirteen grant funds.
Thanks. I'll be real quick. It's in your pocket. Uh, Act thirteen, we had nothing last year because of COVID. The twenty five thousand the year before. So we talked about the balance and obviously we wanted a similar to Ms. Booth's presentation. We wanted to leave some reserve in case we got some good projects and didn't want to run it down to zero. So, uh, we're recommending to move forward with a hundred thousand. Uh, there's a little bit more than that in there. It shows the cash balance and some of the projects we paid in the past historically and their costs. Uh, and then we left a little reserve in there. We're recommending that the committee moves forward with a hundred thousand. So I have.
Go ahead, Mr. Mark. Something quick, quickly. I was appointed chairman of this committee when I got on council this year. I had no idea what Act thirteen committee meant. Uh, so for everybody in the room, what it means is, uh, uh, Act thirteen was created by the Commonwealth. And what it is, is it receives funds from the gas companies that are fracking in Pennsylvania. Uh, they have their own formula of how much they collect in fees and revenues from the fracking company. And, uh, because, you know, the state's view is fracking does cause some kind of harm to the environment wherever it's going on. They want to return this money back to the counties, uh, to encourage recreational and programs to help the environment. So Act thirteen grant money, it's not a lot. Uh, we receive, I guess, two hundred to three hundred thousand every year. Uh, last year we got nothing because of COVID. And, uh, the county usually has its own programs that we embark on, like the black fly spray program. It's sixty five, seventy thousand every year. And then we do some work around the, the, the commons here or whatever, right, on the riverbank and things like that. And then there's money left over that the municipalities could apply for. And we'll have those, uh, dates when we get through our next Act thirteen meeting, right? That's what it is. That's all. Thanks.
It's a part of that recognition, right? Use that.
Yeah, the committee, uh, decided, uh, uh, Ms. McDermott, Mr. Loskavich is on the committee. Uh, last week we met that, uh, although there'd be about a hundred and forty thousand in the kitty, we thought we would dole out a hundred thousand, make it available to the various municipalities, keep forty thousand on hand because sometimes some big project comes up that we should do. Uh, and then if not, we just hold it over till next year to forty thousand. So that's our recommendation. Uh, we just wanted to let the figures be known here tonight. And then we'll have more information in the near future about the actual application process.
There's some previous pro, uh, projects that. Thank you.
Just quickly, this, this hundred thousand, is this reflected anywhere in the budget to offset any expenses or is this? I guess available from municipalities.
I'd be able to. To utilize.
I think historically we used about seventy five thousand. Uh, we would change it, but obviously we have the cash there to do it. Uh, so we'll go through the process, but when we put the book together, we historically, uh, besides the zero on the twenty five, have been around the seventy thousand mark, seventy, seventy five. So we have the cash to a hundred. If the seventy five is in the book, we can change it to the hundred and we have the money to do it.
Take it out of like.
Yeah, we'll take it out of the, out of the, out of the cash and out of the reimbursement line. Yeah. Yep.
All right, we will move into the, uh, the budget. We have division eleven, controller.
Uh, I don't have much of a budget. I have a two-page budget for you. Before I start, first of all, I just want to say to council, from that PFM slide trend, we need to put that up online. That PFM presentation was fabulous. Kudos to council on getting the debt down, getting a good credit rating. All that stuff is good things for us. We need to, we need to make sure that people know that. The charter does work in certain areas, obviously. On my budget presentation, uh, I still have, I'll look at the, um, the regular proposed budget worksheet, if you would, uh, for the department. My, my staffing is the same. Nothing's changed on my staffing. I still have uh, three non-represented employees and one union represented employee in my department. Um, and myself as the elected official. Uh, the difference in the revenue, there was always three hundred and seventy five dollars, uh, in the budget for revenue. That never materialized, so I just took that out of the budget. There's really no sense in having it in there. It was for restitution, I believe, from an audit that was conducted back in two thousand and twelve or thirteen, back when I was a controller. We've never realized any money from that other than probably three years of, and I don't know why we're not getting the three seventy five from that, but that was an order that, uh, we haven't realized that. So I took it out of the budget. On the expense side, the only change in my, uh, my budget overall is the, uh, difference in your adopted number for legal fees. I increased that by a hundred percent and my repairs and maintenance. I increased that to fifteen hundred only because I need to replace, uh, probably a desktop or two maybe next year. But even with those changes in the budget, my, uh, my budget report is less than it was this year. Uh, my overall department report, uh, shows that I'm four hundred and ninety six dollars less than I spent this year overall, uh, between, uh, the expenses. Expenses in twenty twenty two were two seventy eight, four thirty seven. And anticipated budget expenses is two seventy seven, nine forty one. Uh, the question on the merit raises above there in payroll for wages. I don't know why there's a merit increase in my budget. I never requested that. Um, in fact, if you look at department head, you'll, you'll see a zero there for me. And in all your budget reports, you'll see a zero for department head, but clearly I put down zero for merit increase. But one was plugged in the budget and I'm sure they could take that out. So my budget is, uh, actually realistic. I don't need the merit rate, uh, raise increase in there. Uh, my employees that were hired this year, I, I revamped my, the department structure and eliminated my senior auditor and created an internal auditor for. And eliminated my senior auditor and created an internal auditor for, to spread the money out. Evenly and, and cost the county less money. So to save the county money in the long run by eliminating a senior auditor position and creating an internal auditor position. There was a, see if there was a decrease in. Uh, wages total, you'll see there was a decrease from two forty five, two twenty seven, down to two forty two, two thirty three. Which is a decrease of three thousand four hundred, four dollars. That's pretty much the budget. That's the only changes that I have in my worksheet. Uh, I think it's required that I get additional money for, uh, that I'm requesting in legal fees. As council is fully aware of the, the issues that I've been having with the manager in restricting my access. As we found today from the merit, from the budget transfer. I did not get a notice about, about budget transfer, but according to Mr. McGinnity, he told me you guys did receive it. So the budget, yeah, budget transfer was sent to council, but it was not sent to me. I don't know if that was intentional, but.
That was, that was on.
Okay, all right.
I just looked at the email, sent it to Roberta and he showed it on.
Okay, I appreciate that. Okay, and I apologize for this version then. Uh, that certainly was not, uh, an intention of the manager then. But clearly I've been having issues, so we need to make sure that I continue to have my legal fees provided for me. And that's the extent of my budget. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer anything you have. Sure. How many years ago? What? I'm sorry.
How many years ago? In your office.
I think there's a deputy been there ever since, uh, I've been, ever since I took the office.
You came to us in the budget process.
Right.
That's a lot more than manager.
Right.
You did not put any money or any salary in.
Back to that, I thought there was always a deputy there. It was even, even under, even under county charter or state county code. State county code, there was a.
But you came to us and said, hey, I might have a deputy.
Right.
So are you using that position now? Who is, is there a person in that?
I, I am using that position currently right now, but the person who's in there, uh, is. On, I, I will say that. She's in and out. She's working part-time most of it. She's full-time, but she's working at night from home most of the time. She comes in the office three days a week or two days a week, but that's about to be rectified in about two more weeks. She's gonna be resigning and they'll put somebody else in there. Some situations changed for her. When she originally started, it was gonna be a full-time position. She was gonna be there all the time. And since then, things have changed in her other, uh, businesses she had, and she can't fulfill that obligation. So we're changing that position. So we're gonna put a, another person in there.
Wasn't filled and was part-time.
No, it wasn't. It was never filled as a part-time position.
Position wasn't built.
Originally, the position was not filled in January. When I first came in office, there was nobody in that position or the senior auditor position. So it was vacant for probably a good six months, I would say, of the year. So I did not have a deputy for six months. It took me a while to get somebody that would take that position and be qualified to do it. So. I had advertised several times to get somebody in there. So, uh, that position was empty, so was senior auditor. And at, because I couldn't get a senior auditor for the money that I had posted, a good senior, I just decided that it would be better for the office. To eliminate the senior auditor and create an internal auditor. And the result of that was I was able to get an additional person with less money and spread the money out over to internal auditors. And it was, it worked out better. So I ended up getting it, because it's easier to get. I won't say lower level, uh, employee, uh, staff, but senior auditor requirement was pretty, pretty stringent. And to get somebody at the price that we had for the salary was difficult. So we had to, I, I just thought it was easier. Well, the senior auditor was more of a management type of person when the, when the deputy needed somebody to, uh, direct the staff for, uh. Outside auditors when we were going out on, out in field. The senior auditor was more management and that was something we carried over from the old state county, uh, structure. We really didn't need that. The senior auditor structure was financial. We don't do a lot of financial audits in the controller's office. We're mostly policy, procedure, internal controls. We do look at finances for tax collectors and things of that nature, but we don't get into, uh. Audits like, uh, Perenny Beard or, uh, uh, those type of audits. We don't do that stuff. So we didn't really need the stat. We didn't need that type of, uh, manager in the, in the office. Yep.
Travel. Still forty four hundred in the last year.
Let me see, travel expenses is. Yeah, for, it said four, forty four hundred. Was this twenty?
Yeah, twenty four hundred brought down to forty eight and twenty one.
Yeah, we, you know, we. Yeah, we really didn't, uh, we didn't do a lot of traveling this year. Obviously, our, our actual this year is only four hundred dollars. So I mean, if council needed to trim that back, they could probably trim that back a little bit. But I anticipate hopefully being able to send some of the staff, the newer people to, uh, do their conferences or whatever they need to do. So I may, I may need some travel expense in there, but as the history of that, you probably have the history for the next last couple of years. I don't think they've ever spent that much in travel, have they? Do you have the, you have the history? Okay, so that's, I mean, that's obviously up to council. If you wanted to trim that back, you're, you're welcome to take some of that out if you need to, within reason. That would be an ineligible expense, yes. Yes, unless you could figure out someplace where you could class. There you go.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Griffin. Public comment? Mr. Raybo?
Mr. Chairman, uh, I would also like to say about the other funding measures that are available. Five point five billion of ARP money that the state has, that's sitting on. That's another avenue that can be used for road and bridge. Because, as I've said for many years, going back to the five dollar registration fee when that was implemented into law. As we all know, the state collects, uh, vehicle registration fee money and gas tax money. And it goes into the pool known as the motor license fund within the state budget. And they give approximately seven hundred fifty million dollars per year. To pay down the state police pension debt and for their overtime for municipalities that shoot, that choose or opt not to hire. Their own local police force. So that money right there. And it, and the auditor general, the previous auditor general, Mr. De Pasquale, did an audit, which four billion dollars was diverted. From that motor license fund to what I just stated for the Pennsylvania State Police. Now, if you look at other states. All the, I believe forty nine other states do this with their gas tax and vehicle registration fee money. They apportion. That money to the counties for their road projects. And I've seen it in the Midwest. Sure, Mr. Robertson, in your travels, you've seen that too. You know, that the gas tax, whatever that, that particular state has collected in, from their state gas tax. Goes to, uh, the particular counties or municipalities for, uh, grants or loans, infrastructure loans for road and bridge repair. So I don't understand why our state is dragging its heels. And not modernizing and moving into the twenty first century like the other states in our. Grand, uh, dear country of ours. So. I don't under, I just think that, uh, that pool of money, along with the, uh, the other pool of money, and I said this to the previous county managers. And councils, I'm sure the ones that were on here before remembers this. The tipping fee can be used. Which is, you'd have to work with the planning commission on to establish for, uh, oversized, uh, um, trucks. That go use county bridges and roads. That you could charge and, and that would be in, you know, in coordination with the municipal, uh, police or the state police to weigh the tri轴s. That could be another avenue, uh, for funding. So why not explore these other options? And, and I've been saying this for several years. I think that this needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo. I do have one person that I believe is still, I don't know if they're still there. I've Donna Whale. Uh, Mark Boncar. Boncap, or something like that. No, anybody on Zoom? Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, before we do that, really quick, one quick question. Since we were talking about some of the budget. Are we, how is this gonna work? Are we going to do a, some type of meeting to do amendments halfway through? Or are we gonna wait till the end? I'm just curious how it's.
Um, I believe that's gonna be up to the discretion of the chair. Obviously, she's not here. Um, my, my thought on it, just my two cents that I'm, I'm gonna ask her. Is that maybe we do two sets of amendments, one some point in the middle of our discussions and then one towards the end and figure it out from there.
Thank you very much.
But again, that's, that's, that's a hurt expression.
I figured, I figured might as well throw the recommendation now.
All right, we have a motion in a second, all in favor? All right.